Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Edina City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, 7:03 PM. And Director Bennerott has, I think, told all of you about the fact that we're still doing these meetings in a hybrid fashion. Some folks are here in the audience, and we'll address their concerns shortly. There is no public hearing matters tonight, so there won't be an opportunity there to participate in participatory conversation, is one way to put it. And then also, if you're going to participate in community comment, just remember that it can't be a comment with regard to something that's on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing. For those folks watching on cable TV or at edinamn.gov live meetings or Facebook, here is the number you want to call, and it'll come up on the screen here momentarily. There. So it's a series of access numbers you call, call the 312 number, and then the access code and the password. Press *3 to indicate an interest in speaking. The operator will bring you into Director Bennerott, and Director Bennerott will bring you into the council. And then we'll have a conversation with you about anything that's on your mind in community comment. So having provided that information, let's call the meeting to order and ask Director Bennerott to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Rissler.
Here.
And Mayor Hovland.
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a form of meeting agenda that's been published. Is there anyone on the council or at the staff level that wishes to modify the meeting agenda in any form or fashion? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Number Jackson moves. Number Agnew seconds the approval of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Meeting agenda is adopted. And now we are at community comment, and we have folks in the audience this evening, I think, for a variety of different purposes, maybe some to listen and some to address the council. And we'll take comment here in the audience first before we go to the virtual world. And one of our residents is getting up now to speak, and please give us your name and your address.
Thank you. My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelius Circle. Mayor, council members, residents of Edina. Great leaders are humble and admit when they're wrong. On numerous occasions over the last year, Mr. Neal has disparaged the water rate analysis I shared with staff and which I ultimately brought before the council in these chambers. Mr. Neal has stated that he did not know where my data came from and that my calculations and conclusions were impossible to confirm, inferring not so subtly that there was no basis for my conclusions. This past month, on February 28th, Mr. Neal, city finance staff, the city's consultant, and I all met. In that long-awaited meeting, city finance staff and the consultant conceded that the data I was using was the same data provided to the consultant in 2023 to calculate the city's water rates. In addition, both city finance staff and the consultant agreed that my calculations and conclusions were correct, that yes, over 80% of commercial customers are still paying less for water in 2024 than they did in 2022. Therefore, I feel it appropriate, given the public nature in which Mr. Neal made his remarks, that he acknowledge his error in a similar fashion. Mr. Neal, you had an opportunity to do so in the March 6 meeting, March 6 council meeting, and did not. I await your public reply.
Thank you, Mr. Zickert.
My three minutes aren't up.
I'm taken. You want me to read your statement that you prepared for me to read tonight?
You read whatever statement you'd like, but that's the statement that is at the crux of the matter.
Yeah, Mr. Zickert, this isn't a colloquy.
That's fine. I've got three minutes, and my red light isn't on yet.
All right. Our usual practice is to have the presenter make their presentations and their assertions.
I understand.
And then we take those into consideration and will respond accordingly.
Mayor, as Mr. Neal has chosen not to remain silent, how long will I have to wait to hear his reply in these chambers? And council members, is this the behavior the council expects from its city manager? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zickert. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Evan Williams. I live at 3905 West 55th Street. I am here tonight to talk on the tree ordinance. I had emailed all of you a week or so ago. I'm a home builder in Edina. I've done a number of homes, and the prime reason I'm up here tonight is one of the homes that I'm currently working on was a home purchased in 2022. Trees were removed in 2022 prior to the tree ordinance passing, and I have been going back and forth with the city forester that this is not applicable to me, given that there was no ordinance on the books when the trees were removed. So I'm hoping we can clarify this. I don't know if this situation has ever come up before, but like I said, there was no ordinance on the books when the trees were removed, and I don't believe that I've heard of laws being retroactive in this type of situation. So that is one of my comments, and hopefully we can get that clarified. I think maybe you have a session coming up in the next month or so on the tree ordinance. But a couple other comments as a builder in Edina. We have a, just another example, we're starting another project, and as far as the ability for how many trees you can have in a lot, I have two trees, 30 feet apart, one tree is damaging the other tree. One tree will be removed, I'll keep the other one. But in this instance, you know, we kind of have two rather ugly trees trying to go on this one lot, and because of the fees and the escrow being held, you know, we'll do our best, but there's only so many trees, I guess, in general, I'm trying to state, that you can put close to each other. And one of the fears I have with the ordinance is that you're going to have so many trees on a lot that you're not actually going to get the tree canopy that you are seeking. You're going to have very thin trees that'll grow vertically but not actually horizontally, and won't actually provide any shade. The other comment I would just say is that for builders and people that, you know, build new homes, you're actually incentivizing homeowners to remove their trees prior to selling, and I think that should be just kind of overall in probably the response on the ordinance is you're actually going to make homes more valuable the less trees they have. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, good. Would you give me your last name again, please?
Williams.
Williams?
And was it 3905 West 55th Street?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Mr. Williams, remember getting your email. We'll try to get these questions answered for you.
My name is Susan, is it on? Okay, my name is Susan Lee. I'm at 6708 Point Drive. July 26, 2020 marked the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act being signed into law by President Bush. This act was a monumental step in providing protections for Americans with disabilities and had a large effect on businesses and land development. The American with Disabilities Act impacted the role of civil engineers through regulated standards for accessible design, known as the ADA Accessible Guidelines. The 2010 ADA Standards for Accessible Design are derived from both this act and the subsequent amendment in 2008. State and local governments are also allowed to prescribe their own standards so long as they provide a greater level of accessibility than the federal standard. Civil engineers have the responsibility of implementing ADA development standards throughout the design process and serve as a resource for clients who have compliance concerns. With ADA lawsuits on the rise and a societal push toward greater corporate social responsibility, the emphasis on site accessibility continues to grow. Part of this emphasis includes hiring a qualified civil engineer to ensure sites are meeting accessibility requirements to the maximum extent feasible. I just attended the work session that immediately preceded this meeting, expecting a discussion of the ADA design and planning that went into the recently constructed Grand View pedestrian bridge. It was disappointing to hear that this was done only after the DOJ opened their investigation into the bridge. I am asking the council to convey a clear expectation to the city manager and his staff that accessibility for all residents in the city of Edina is a priority requirement for all city-designed projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
David Frankel, 4510 Lakeview Drive, Edina. Just as a comment from attending the meeting earlier, I was in Chicago last week and was down in Millennial Park, which has a relatively new bridge over Columbus Avenue. The grade of that bridge way exceeds what's required by ADA, way exceeds. You'd hardly tell the grade on the bridge. And my comment that I would repeat, listening to the CEO of General Mills, his line to all his employees is just do the right thing. When it comes to ADA, we need to do the right thing. I don't care what the state or federal laws are, we need to do the right thing. The other issue is, Edina's on the front page of the Minneapolis-St. Paul Business Journal because of the gentleman's previous discussion about the tree ordinance. I'm not here to discuss the ordinance specifically, but it's always interesting to learn things through the media that I wish I would have learned through the city that I pay taxes in. They have a very detailed map of the tree canopy in Minnetaka and Edina. Why isn't this published anywhere? I don't even know who does this. I live in this city. I would like to get this information published on a city website that as a resident, that I pay for this presumably, and I assume it's GIS, through the city forester, which is not mentioned in this article, that I can see that instead of doing a data request. I know the city manager likes to have data requests for pieces of information, but as we all know, we live in the information age. This is very basic data, data and evidence, National League of Cities. You all attend conferences for that organization. The other thing I'd like to bring up is emerald ash bor, which seems to be non-existent in this building. It's an issue that's racing through all of Minnesota. All the surrounding communities in the Twin Cities have an emerald ash bor program. I did a data request and asked if Edina has one. We do not. Every tree in Edina, every ash tree in Edina is going to die from EAB unless it's treated. And by ignoring the problem, we're going to run into a wall like what happened in the 70s with Dutch Elm. All of a sudden, you're going to have thousands of trees that have to come down, and you're going to have a huge expense in a relatively short period of time instead of doing a scaled program, taking down trees as necessary. But a huge difference between emerald ash bor and Dutch Elm, ash trees, when they die, they'll fall over. There is no structural integrity to those trees once they're dead. It's a huge safety issue, and that has to affect the safety of every resident in our city. Even when these ash trees are on private property, they need to be marked by the city forester. And look at programs like Bloomington and Minneapolis have to finance getting those trees cut down, because the slower you take to remove them, the bigger spread you are going to have of emerald ash bor. It's going to get every tree, it's just a matter of slowing it down. Edina needs a plan for emerald ash bor. Look at Bloomington's website, they have a plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frankel.
Okay, good evening. It is the first day of spring, as I was reminded driving here and having the sun blasting me straight in my face this evening. Once spring is here, I love hearing especially the red-winged blackbirds in the marsh around the lakes. I walk through Pamela Park almost every single day. We have some invasive species in addition to emerald ash bor that are a concern to me because they are quickly in locations, taking over parts of Edina's marshlands. And one of them is the purple loosestrife, and I went out and cut some just today for you. It's quite tall. This I cut from the marsh of, what is, Lake Nancy. It's not really a lake, it's a dredged, used to be a cattail marsh back in 1940. And the photo here is of this marshland where I cut this. When this plant is flowering, purple loosestrife, it's actually got pink flowers, these are where the flowers are, full of seeds. They grow in icky clumps. I got a nasty splinter from these just today, and they have completely taken over virtually this whole marsh area. Once an invasive plant, this is from Asia, once it takes over, all the native species that the birds love, the insects that would normally be on the cattails, and other native plants, they're gone. And it changes the whole ecology, it changes the bird life and everything else that lives in that marsh. I would like to see the city look into a good way to, using good science, work on getting rid of this or keeping it from spreading further. Okay, that's the first nasty one. The second one is, this is a Greek-based word, fragmites, pronounced fragmites. Obviously a very tall reed. I have this on the floor. I took a picture of some fragmites reeds that have started to get a foothold in Pamela Park, in the marsh at the north end of the park. And the seed head, calligraphers love these. They make fantastic reed pens, and they don't cost you anything, and the DNR loves it if you take them out of a marsh. As you can see, the seeds are very light, fluffy, and they just blow away. This is the invasive type of fragmites that has been spreading out of the Middle East for a few hundred years now. Once these get a foothold, nothing else grows. I was just reading up on what the roots do. The rhizome roots can spread 70 feet and have new plants come up from them. Edina does have a pretty good-sized patch that's growing very quickly in the marsh of Nine Mile Creek on the west side of 1, or east side of 169. This patch in Pamela Park may be a native fragmites. I think we need to have somebody, maybe ask the DNR if they have someone, that can evaluate fragmites patches that we have in the marshlands in Edina. Breteson Park has another patch, too, so.
All right, thanks, Ms. Weston.
All right. If anybody wants a sample to take home, you can take it home.
I think we'll let you re-bag it and take it.
I'm going to. Puffing up like this.
We're going to have fragmites growing in the chambers here. Thanks, Ms. Weston. Anyone else? Okay, how about online? Director Bennerott, anybody?
I have no callers online, sir.
Okay. Manager Neal, comments from our city manager with regard to concerns of residents that were raised in the prior meeting. Do you have any?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. There are several. The first question was, how is staff held accountable for their recommendations made to the Edina City Council? Part of our response was to go into our vision statement, our mission statements that we have as a city, but we really talk about accountability kind of coming upstream, whether it's as an employee or political accountability sometimes that council has for staff and for boards and commissions and other folks associated with us. So that's how we do it. We had a second question about why is money in the Edina Park Fund tied to lodging disbursements to explore Edina, the local convention visitors bureau? We adopted, the city council adopted, an ordinance in 2014 to establish a lodging tax. At that time, there were three hotels in the city, there are still three hotels in the city. The Homewood Suites, Residence Inn, and the West Inn. The Residence Inn was the, is the hotel that's connected to Edinburgh Park. When Edinburgh Park was set up in the development agreement, there was a provision that said if there's ever a lodging tax adopted by the city council, then we get a cut of it to help pay the costs of guests using the, they being the hotel, get a cut of it for guests that are using the gym, the walking track, and the swimming pool. So that's why, that's why that happens that way. It's a little bit of a quirk in our system here, but it's in compliance with the development agreements, and it's permissible in law to use the, to disperse the lodging taxes like that. The third question was, a complaint has been filed with the U.S. Attorney's Office about the new Grand View pedestrian bridge. What has the U.S. Attorney sent to the city and how has the city responded? Yes, we did get a letter from the Department of Justice around the ADA condition or compliance of the bridge. It was a letter requesting, we've shared with the council, and we can share with public too, it's a, it's a letter that really is requesting kind of an inventory of information about the bridge. Who built it? What are the plans? What did we do most recently with this project? Do we receive federal funds? Things like that. So we have provided that response to the DOJ office, and we'll wait for their response. The final question was, if you recall, was...
And folks that have requested that information have received it.
I believe so, but Sharon Allison, our city clerk, is the person that handles that data practice. I'm just telling you that they can receive it. There's nothing, at one point, we thought there's a lawsuit that's going to happen here, we need to be protective of it from that standpoint. After talking to the League of Minnesota Cities, we've determined that there isn't, and so we can provide it. It can be open. The final question was from Floyd Grayble, and it was a complicated question around large insurance increases that some of the multifamily, whether they're condos or townhouses, are receiving in their insurance, excess and surplus lines insurance. He asked you if we could let other elected officials know that this hardship is happening out there, and we certainly can and have already, for some of us have. That's all we got.
Good. Okay. Prompt any questions or comments from council members, the report by the city manager? All right. Next matter on the agenda is the consent items, the adoption of the consent agenda. I had an indication that items 6I and 6N should be removed from the consent agenda. Councilmember Rissler would like to discuss 6I, and councilmember Jackson would like to discuss 6N.
Could we also remove item H?
H? Okay. All right. With respect to the consent agenda items, then, with the exception of items 6H, I, and N, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
I second.
Number Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the approval of items on the consent agenda with the exclusion of items 6H, I, and N. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. All the items on the consent agenda are approved and adopted except for 6H, I, and N. And now we will turn to item 6H first and turn to member Rissler and have her raise her inquiry with respect to that matter.
For item H, I just want to give a shout out to all the staff who worked to secure the DNR Shade Tree Program Bonding Grant, and it's relevant to a comment that was made tonight. We received $480,000, and this is to remove and to, well, to replace hazardous ash trees on public land with diverse and climate adaptive tree species at a two-to-one rate. So I thought it was good to pull that out and highlight that.
Yeah, it was a good thought, in view of some of the comments that were raised. Yes, Director Milner?
I was just here if there was a question to that item.
No question, just a shout out, because I thought that was relevant.
Super happy with Matthew's work on these grants.
And then I requested we poll, or should we go ahead and vote on?
Yeah, we should, we should deal with this matter. So, yeah, member Rissler wanted to point out that under the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Shade Tree Program, we got a grant based on a request that we made, and it's an amount of $480,000 to replace hazardous ash trees on public land with more diverse and climate adaptive tree species. So, member Rissler, would you care to move the matter?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Member Rissler moves, and member Jackson seconds the adoption of item 6H, which is a resolution 2024-25 approving the Shade Tree Program Bonding Grant Agreement with the state of Minnesota. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Motion's adopted. And then on to 6I, which is next in line. Member Rissler.
And here, I requested this be polled because I really am curious to know about the improvements for pedestrians and bikers, and specifically interested in how those improvements will make it easier for kids to bike to schools, Southview, Concord, Normandale, or walk along that way.
I think your member, member Rissler, appreciate that question. This is the project right outside City Hall, just on 50th Street, about halfway down City Hall Building to Grange. And crude graphic, just did that quick here today for this discussion, but anything in blue are much wider sidewalks. So everything on the north side of 50th is going from five feet right on the back of curb to 10 feet wide along that facility. So really that opportunity to share space with kids on bikes and other users. And on the south side, we're upsizing the City Hall sidewalk from five feet to eight feet. We're improving the intersection. We now have crosswalks, ADA push buttons, and lighting improvements at the intersection of Grange and 50th, so that whole intersection will be accessible to the sidewalks on both sides of the street. And this is setting us up for that future project in 2025 when we do the full interchange, the Vernon Bridge, the interchange bridge, where we have 10-foot-wide sidewalks all the way from basically City Hall across the bridge, both sides of the streets, all the way to Interlock and Boulevard. So this is the first piece in 2024, and then there's that little piece on Grange Road that I didn't highlight. That'll be done in 2025 when we remove those on and off ramps to Highway 100. So now you'll be able to decide if you want to use Eden or 50th to get over to the west side of the district. And then I noted a few other improvements with improving left-turn lanes, making those left-turn pockets for safety of vehicles, and those medians now really narrow the travel lanes to try to slow those cars down, which is really a benefit to the pedestrian and cyclists in the district.
To be clear, there is no sidewalk along... So everything on the north side of 50th is going from five feet right on the back of curb to 10 feet wide along that facility. So really, that opportunity to share space with kids on bikes and other users. And on the south side, we're upsizing the City Hall sidewalk from five feet to eight feet. We're improving the intersection. We now have crosswalks, ADA push buttons, and lighting improvements at the intersection of Grange and 50th. So that whole intersection will be accessible to the sidewalks on both sides of the street. And this is setting us up for that future project in 2025 when we do the full interchange, the Vernon Bridge, the interchange bridge, where we have 10-foot-wide sidewalks all the way from basically City Hall across the bridge, both sides of the streets, all the way to Interlock and Boulevard. So this is the first piece in 2024. And then there's that little piece on Grange Road that I didn't highlight. That'll be done in 2025 when we remove those on and off ramps to Highway 100. So now you'll be able to decide if you want to use Eden or 50th to get over to the west side of the district. And then I noted a few other improvements with improving left-turn lanes, making those left-turn pockets for safety of vehicles. And those medians now really narrow the travel lanes to try to slow those cars down, which is really a benefit to the pedestrian and cyclists in the district.
To be clear, there is no sidewalk along Grange that would extend and get people across Eden.
In 20, oh, sorry.
In 20, it's coming?
2025.
Okay.
With the big interchange. We didn't want to finish the sidewalk because we're removing those on and off ramps down in this lower-left corner of the graphic. So we're going to stop it right here in '24. It stopped over here in '23, and we're going to fill that gap in in '25 when we remove those ramps. So now someone will have access along Grange Road to go to Eden and then OLG or wherever their destination is.
Thank you.
You care to comment, too, on the source of funds for this project?
Yeah. This one and last year's project was funded from a TIF district created from the development at the old Perkins site, the Maison Green Project. So really, an opportunity with that project to improve the bike and ped networks, some traffic stuff, and really, again, looking for those opportunities to make improvements within the district is what the council wanted when that project went forward, so.
Really seemed fortuitous, as I recall, that we had that opportunity with this TIF district to make all of these public improvements, which is terrific.
Yes. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions, comments on this matter? Member Risher, would you care to move this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by member Risher, second by member Jackson, to approve the request for purchase, Engineering 24-5, which embodies the 50th Street and Grange Road improvements that Director Milner just described. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Motion's approved. And then, member Jackson, you have six N.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, is Mr. Newendorf here? Yes. So if you don't mind, coming up, in 2022 and 2023, I participated, the city, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, and the community foundation all got together and worked on a program called One Town, One Family. And we came up with a number of prototypes of ways in which to make our city more welcoming. And so when I saw this matter on here, I contacted Mr. Newendorf. I sent you an email that the school district had sent me with the ideas, and I was hoping that we could incorporate some of the One Town, One Family ideas into the signage at 50th and France. And I, if you could tell us how you are going to use that information, that'd be great.
Sure, happy to. Yes, the agenda item tonight is to approve a grant that we received from Hennepin County to help pay for some of these wayfinding systems. So this has been on our list of things to work on for several years, got paused for COVID, but we're using a variety of sources to help with the customer wayfinding down at 50th and France. And we're, at this point, we don't have a specific design or arrangement in mind, but the intention is to incorporate traditional wayfinding directional signs, left turn, right turn, straight ahead, those types of things, with placemaking features. For example, the Spalding statue on France Avenue near Saloon, Edina Grill. A lot of people say, hey, we'll meet you at 9:45 at Spalding. It's a placemaking that people use as a wayfinding icon. And so part of the idea of this overall program is to incorporate other public art or other wayfinding decorations, in a way, as a way to navigate through the district. So we're certainly able to incorporate the One Town, One Family type of philosophy into that. We also do anticipate rolling out, on the Better Together Edina webpage, platforms for people to submit ideas. And so we'll certainly incorporate the One Town, One Family into that website. But the idea is that we're not just reaching out to a man, or a woman, or a younger person, or an older person. We want to make sure that the wayfinding system there is appealing to many different types of people, to all people. And so we can certainly incorporate that.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Now, member Jackson, would you care to move adoption of Resolution 2024-26, which would accept the Business District Initiative Grant from Hennepin County in the sum of $35,000?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Member Agnew seconds. The motion is stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Resolution 2024-26 is adopted. All right. That completes our work on the consent portion of the agenda. We're going to move on now to special recognitions and presentations, and we've got three matters in this portion of the agenda. But the first one is introduction by city manager Scott Neal of our new Sustainability Manager, Marissa Baer.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. I'm happy to introduce Marissa Baer to you tonight. She is our new Sustainability Manager. I'll let her talk a little bit about where she's from and why she's here. She works, our sustainability function is within engineering, so she ultimately reports up to Mr. Milner. We're happy that she joined our team. Marissa?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Again, I'm Marissa Baer. I'm the new Sustainability Manager. Excited to be here tonight to meet all of you and excited to be in this role as Edina continues to be on the leading edge of sustainability and climate action. Just briefly about my background, I come from an energy nonprofit called Center for Energy and Environment, also known as CE. I was there for almost six years where I managed the community planning projects. So I've worked with communities across Minnesota and Wisconsin to do action plan implementation and development, analyze greenhouse gas emissions, help set goals, and then facilitate stakeholder processes, both internally and externally with stakeholders. Prior to that, I was over in the city of Eden Prairie, where I worked in community development, and while there, helped launch some of their initial sustainability programs, including a recognition program for residents and businesses. Really look forward to collaborating with you and with city staff and the greater Edina community as we work to achieve the Climate Action Plan goals. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Baer? We've left you alone now for about 10 days, I think. But there's a lot of pent-up work to be done around the environment and the climate, and I know that you're well aware of all of those things. There's grant applications to be made with the Inflation Reduction Act. I think we've got some really great opportunities here as a community to do some wonderful things, so we're really pleased to have you here.
Thank you.
All right. Good. Look forward to working with you. And next, we're going to be going to the Stormwater Utility Overview, and Ross Bittner, our Engineering Services Manager, has this matter, and Director Milner is going to do a little intro, I think.
I think I will, yeah. So it's an interesting evening. We've got two special presentations for you tonight. And the first one is from Ross Bittner. You know him from all the other times we've been up here talking about various engineering stuff, one of our experts, and he'll provide this Stormwater Utility Overview. And the tie-in is here is just to have that understanding, that base understanding, because the next topic is funded, the clean water strategy and vision is funded, potentially, well, it is funded. At a level today, you may want us to fund more. So Ross is going to go through the overview of the utility. And then Jessica Wilson, our Water Resources Manager, will come up and provide the presentation on the clean water strategy. And with us tonight is an expert in the field from Bar Engineering. So Stephanie Johnson is a Water Resources Engineer with Bar Engineering, over 20 years of experience in management, planning, and analysis, and really has those expertise in stormwater planning, water quality, both in the public and private sectors, to improve and protect urban and natural resources. She worked as the Director of Surface and Water for the City of Minneapolis, and also was an outreach director at the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization. She has both a PhD and is a licensed professional engineer, so we're ready to use her expertise tonight. We thought it would be good to get another voice in the discussion with clean water later this evening. So we'll kick it off with Ross.
Good thought from staff standpoint. I think we'll enjoy that presentation. And Mr. Bittner, I think all of us are waiting for spring to see how your work at, and everybody else's work, Ms. Wilson's work, too, down at Weber Park, looks as it grows into year two here.
We're ready for the rain.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for having me tonight, and thanks for Chad for the introduction. The last time I really presented a presentation like this in earnest was back in 2014 to '16 era, where we were talking about some structural funding issues that we had around some roads, some sewer utility, and we called it the State of the Infrastructure. For this agenda item, I produced a State of the Infrastructure specific for the Stormwater Utility. The Stormwater Utility is one of the three water utilities that we run. And for that utility, I'm going to kind of go into some detail on, you know, putting it in perspective from a very high level, how your actions and policy and strategy filter down into that, you know, capital and budget level. So showing you the dashboard and how this utility works. Going to talk about, you know, where we are in this industry, in the state, talking a little bit about the ecosystem and our trends, partners, and strategies, and then dig more into, you know, some of the governance, financial overview, and looking at where we spend the money through this utility. So the mission and the service of this utility are fairly newly redrawn. I'm the author of the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Seven. That one was done through a strategic and engagement process with the community. The Water Resources Chapter covers all three of those major water utilities. And then we've recently redone the Water Resources Management Plan in 2022 to bring in all the work from our flood risk reduction strategy that we conducted in that 2018 to 2022 time. So the main core services of the Stormwater Utility are actually threefold, flood risk and stormwater management. We're trying to layer in more clean water services, and then we also do natural resource restoration and protection. The key takeaway there, the reason I've got that key, is sometimes these service levels, they actually conflict with each other. Trying to race the water off the landscape means it can pick up a lot of pollutants on its way. You know, it can be erosive to the soils. So we want to start thinking about this, you know, more holistically, thinking about them in terms of long-term equilibrium, and trying to be as smart as we can based on what we know about that natural and infrastructure interface. But the service level is basically set in a couple of different ways. One is minimum standards from regulation. You know, we are at the end of a long chain, as we talk about our partners, and then also council strategy and policy. So how do we do that? So the key trends, this is the story of an aging first-string suburb. The past age of development in the '50s was a different water ethic. So we are challenged by our current infrastructure just not meeting the standards and the expectations of today. The infrastructure is getting old. As we, you know, enter our fifth, sixth, and seventh decade, some of those infrastructure systems just meet the end of their life. Meanwhile, climate change is not the perspective we had when we initially developed these. Even in my career, when I started engineering in the early 2000s, we were looking at periods of record in our rainfall data that have now been overwritten and still aren't future-focused. So we're looking to, you know, with our partners, to get ahead of some of those issues. Edina's, with every new plan that comes in and weaves into that fabric, a Vision Edina, the Comprehensive Plan, every cycle of CIP and budget, we look to take, you know, the next reasonable next step, guided by some of those high-level strategic documents. But this is the youngest utility of the three. When I think about the water utility and the standardary utility, a lot of these were high-level mandates that came down from the federal government, backed by tons of research. They're centralized systems. They're generally easy to control. But this one is part of nature. It's a tricky one. So we have to figure out how to work with those systems in balance and figure out how to make outcomes and expectations meet. Key partners, like I said, for the clean water portion of this, for sure, we're the end of a long chain that comes down from the federal Clean Water Act through the states. A local quirk to that is our watershed districts and our watershed focus. So we're oftentimes models for the other parts of the country as we're meeting with our technical peers in other places. We also have regional planning. We benefit every day from the consultants, technology suppliers, contractors, and developers, and all the different parties that own land and have water ethic and have water knowledge at their core. And just today, I was meeting with a nonprofit where we're talking about technology and surface water ponding. So associations, professional organizations, universities, and NGOs, we've got a rich water culture here. Our strategies at this local level are trying to really think about this holistically, one water and across watershed at a variety of different scales. It's also trying to figure out how to integrate those natural and infrastructure systems. While we may only have a duty to maintain infrastructure, we want to make sure we're, you know, aware of what nature is throwing at us and that we can manage where we choose smartly. And with all that potential redevelopment with that old utility, we have an opportunity here, basically, charting a new path with reimagining that future during the reinvestment. So we practice a coordinated process. Most of our next projects and the project locations we chose are based off of the transportation utility and our reconstruction program. We try to make integrated project scoping decisions, because you can never build something for clean water flooding at the same price point if you're not bundling it with all those other potential impacts for the other utilities at their end of life as well. And this is, you know, 16-square-mile area, and it's basically whatever Mother Nature throws at us. So we have to do our best to make sure that the people and the systems are ready for the future as best we understand it. So now, taking it down to the level of governance. One of the key strategies that we use is infrastructure asset management, and that's from an ISO standard, ISO 55,000. This is best practice for infrastructure owners. And this circle diagram here is basically one of the six different areas where they kind of describe and framework parts of an organization that's infrastructure owning and work that it does. We split the work between admin and finance for the administrative functions, but most of the work in that lifecycle, acquiring and operating infrastructure, maintaining it for the long term, trying to keep it up, and then disposing it and reacquiring it when it gets old, is happening down in public works and engineering. And we split the duties there. So for example, the systems engineering topic, that is something that, you know, Chad is leading, and we're supporting him. And then shutdown management, fault and incident response, when the big flood comes and we have to get the systems up and running again and unclogged and respond to flooding, you know, public works is our lead there, and we might be bringing in emergency services as well for some of the overarching coordination work. So we use these international best practice standards to try to guide our work, to try to really set the framework so that we know that we're getting towards outcomes for our resources. So now I'm going to try to, you know, thinking about those major service levels, show you a little bit of financial analysis that I performed to try to pull the spending in the capital and the budget side and really split it out and see where we're seeing it in the capital plan, see where we're seeing it in the budget. We think about this in terms of, you know, that two sides of that circle that we just saw in that last graph, the operational expenditures, the capital expenditures. Talk a little bit about, you know, how the investment in the long term is changing over time. And we'll start with the capital side. So this is generally where engineering does most of its work. We're doing it mostly through the Neighborhood Reconstruction Program, but we also run standalone flood projects. When you look at the total asset value of our infrastructure, it's about $150 million if you were to try to replace it, you know, this year. Actually, this might be a 2023 estimate, so last year, last year's dollars. So that's a big number. You know, what does that mean if we were to start to break that down, you know, on a per capita basis? That might be like $2,800 per person. Or on a per household basis, $10,000 or more dollars per household. So, you know, it's like maybe a furnace and air conditioner combined in terms of, like, you know, the household liability. It's a piece of our pie. It's nothing as big as the water utility or the road or the transportation utility. But here's what it's all going for. Most of it is just drainage, getting the water off, managing it during storms, during the smaller ones. That includes the curb and gutter, big piece of that pie in the blue. We're starting to layer in clean water. You see a narrow wedge of orange there. And then new flood, this is generally what you think of as a raising service level for the stormwater piece. I just kind of marked that out in gray. Examples of some of the top items that we're buying, it's infrastructure. Now, on the operational side, this is where Public Works does most of their work and also some engineering programs. And here, you see a lot more colors, but those same big ones also apply here. Stormwater is still the place where we're doing a majority of our work. This includes repairs and maintenance, purchasing all of the materials to do those repairs, the staff to do them. But when you think about the staff, it's really one full-time employee and a whole bunch of part-timers, because we also share duties with those three other utilities, professional services and modeling and studies, and, like I said, the materials and supplies. In this case, I also wanted to take a little bit more and look at the Natural Resources Program, so you can see that in the yellow wedge, and then the late vegetation one, which was really a point of the- And then the lake vegetation one, which was really a point of the August council meeting when we were talking clean water strategy. It's a pretty narrow wedge as well, but you see it on the operational side here as well. That's the destruction of lake vegetation or management of curly leaf pond weed. This is a part of a natural process. This is how we change and grow. When I think about the last big, major points that we've taken here at council with the Morningside ponds there that you mentioned on the right side, you know, we're taking the next logical step, the next supported step. We've seen it through the challenge that this council put forward to us in the 2018 plan approval ahead of the comp plan where, you know, you were surprised by the flooding and clean water gaps between the public expectation and what we were providing. So we've been able to move through that, and I think clean water strategy is going to be no different. So that's all I had for you. It's an overview. It includes the several-page report on kind of the x-ray of the costs and the funds that we use. And I'll stand for any questions you have. Otherwise, I'll make room for the next agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Bettner. Any questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when we're building some of these new ponds, looking, think of the library site or fire station number two. Are we, how is that funded to keep that clean and functional, not functional, but it's going to absorb water, that's floodwater now? Who's responsible for that? Is that through parks? Is that through Public Works? Whose bucket does that fall into?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Jackson. What I heard is, for those two examples, one of them is a public example that you see on the screen there. So it was paid for in our capital improvement plan, but then it goes into several different maintenance spheres. One for the Morningside area is our natural resources pool. So that's managed by Jessica Wilson through a variety of different contractors. You approve them on a, maybe a two- or a three-year cycle. But then there's also the operation of the pump. That's going to be Public Works workers on a regular basis out there, you know, identifying needs if they have any. So there's going to be some kind of ongoing work there. Yeah, and then in the long term, you will see engineering come back again when the major repairs need to take place. For the library site, on the other hand, that is going to be a private facility. It's owned by Hennepin County. We often see private flood or clean water infrastructure being built. Those are often owned and maintained by the private party through an agreement with the watershed district. And then we play essentially a check and inspection role where we're sending out inspectors on an annual basis to make sure everything's in good order and then getting the owner of the facility aware of and correcting anything that may need to happen.
Okay, so and then the fire station will be more like Morningside flood mitigation?
Public.
Okay, terrific. Thanks so much.
Any questions? Yes. Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. One thing that's been on my mind as I've walked through our community is some of the recent impacts of climate change, of more rain being hyper-focused within a shorter amount of time. And so we might not be seeing more rain overall, because I know that we're kind of going through periods of drought as well, which only exacerbates some of those impacts as well when we receive a lot more rain. And so how comfortable do you feel now with the infrastructure that exists to be able to tolerate some of these flash events of more rain than is typical? And can you speak to how those impacts have influenced this report?
Right. Yeah, so if you look at the slide that is in front of you right now, that was one of the key issues that we had dealt with during the flood risk reduction strategy and the update of the Water Resource Management Plan in 2022. So now, when we think about flooding and those, you know, key rains that you're talking about, we know, you know, for areas of the city, it's going to take a generation again to get through everything and apply this new thinking as we reinvest in that infrastructure. So we're, in a lot of ways, as vulnerable or more vulnerable than we were in 2018. But we know, I know you have a plan that, you know, goes on for 20 years. That's going to be a $50 million investment where we're going to be ticking off over the course of those 20 years, you know, major flood issues in the city. So you'll see us slowly dialing down the risk as we bring that thinking in. But that's not the only part of flood risk. And that was, as we sat across the table from all of our partners on that task force, you know, we saw the gap between expectations and what we were able to provide. And part of flood risk is if you are exposed to flooding, you know, do you know it? Are you going to take the next right step for your property to reduce the vulnerability? So we immediately found a bunch of quick wins through that. And when it comes to our regulatory program and our outreach program, you know, the amount of information that's available for the average resident or the average builder at the point of investment or at the point of home purchase is much more than pure cities. We only see several other cities in our local area that are providing as much information and support on the flood vulnerability reduction side. So in that case, we're industry-leading. You know, I think we're definitely material affecting flood risk citywide, but when it comes to that big infrastructure lift, it's going to be a slow turn.
Member Risher. Thank you. Were you done, Member Agnew?
Okay.
One thing that I think about is we oftentimes approve projects that make your job harder, specifically those where setback variances are large and we get less water staying on the site. And I know many, many years ago, when I was on planning, what was said repeatedly is that there was this goal to keep the water on the site. And it seems like we've really moved away from that. And I'm wondering if there's any way we could kind of get back to that. And I'm thinking there's, you know, projects where the water is collected, filtered, and then dumped into a pond behind the building. And there's houses, it's lower down. And it just seems as if, you know, we need to kind of get back to the past. And I don't know if you have any comments on that.
Yeah, just a reaction. I think land use is, you know, one of the key lead drivers to a lot of water resource and natural resource outcomes that we see. You know, we're in a condition that we chose to build a city here, right? So, you know, that's a given. But when it comes to, you know, those tweaks around the edges, one of the major first steps for the Planning Commission after the flood risk reduction strategy was a limitation on the amount of impervious. So we've done some things. I think there may be more to explore, as you mentioned, for setbacks. So we're happy to react whenever the council or the Planning Commission gets into those topics. A lot of times, you know, we've already done some of the analysis to, you know, figure out how well that knob works for this purpose. But oftentimes, there's a lot of other purposes that those same land use decisions might also support, like Tree Canopy or Urban Eat Island and others.
Thank you.
Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to follow up on Member Agnew's comments. So I remember there being grants for rain gardens, I think, through the Waterside District or through the county. Is there a point in our city where someone's coming for a building permit? Or how can residents access things that they can add when they're changing their home, do some water retention onsite and gardening tips?
Yeah, so maybe a two-part answer for that. Our regulatory program does include some specific performance standards for individual site drainage, depending on, you know, the size of an addition or a major demo and remodel. So we can get you more information there. We don't outreach on, so the other side of the question is, you know, do we outreach and do we, you know, provide ideas for them? Usually, when the developer walks in the room, they have a good sense for what they want, and those are distractions and add-ons. So to the extent that they're getting done, it's because of a regulatory trigger and a specific downstream structural flooding issue that requires it.
I think this slide that you've got up is a great illustration if we just think about the work we've been doing with the guidance of your department and the entire engineering department over time is thinking about climate change and looking at the most vulnerable parts of our city. And in this case, it was looking at Morningside neighborhood and determining that was our most vulnerable neighborhood. And then having Weber Park right there to be able to create a stormwater management system that this photograph illustrates after about two years' worth of work. This is a ponding system that's set up to help us manage stormwater in a hurry off of, out of those neighborhoods and hopefully keep it out of people's basements in the lowest part of our community. Preceding that was the notion of redoing Arden Park. And that was as much a stormwater management project, as I recall, as it was a beautification of the park project and an improvement of the flow of the creek itself. So all of that water we could manage off of the 50th and France neighborhood and get it into Minnehaha Creek and have that park serve as a holder and a purveyor, I suppose, of water downstream. So I'm really appreciative, and I think we all are, those of us that have been on council, of the guidance that your department has given us in helping us try to create a logical sort of methodology to make sure that our town stays as safe and dry as it possibly can and doing it over a period of time that's going to take us a little bit of time because it is expensive work. So thanks for all of that. One question I had as I was thinking about stormwater management was, because we're on a regional system, one of the things we've worried about is getting assessed by the Met Council for what we call INI. And I'm wondering if you've seen any uptick in the assessments by the Met Council with respect to stormwater getting into our sanitary sewer system and us being upcharged for that because of the fact that we've had stormwater getting into the sanitary sewer system? What's the status on that?
So that does have a very real effect on the bottom line. It's one of the largest, or is the largest, fee for the sanitary utility, just the conveyance and treatment of waste down to the metro plant. And the issue of INI that you mentioned, I think, in the flood risk reduction strategy, it came out as maybe one of those key vectors between utilities. You know, the worst kind of flooding is when the sewer pipe backs up, and we really identified that in backflow prevention as one of the key metrics. But as you reduce that potential for backflow into homes and as you tighten up the systems, the map that Chad sometimes shares with, you know, our 25-year history of neighborhood reconstructions, a lot of that included investment in the sanitary sewer. And I would say it's kept our rates on par and steady with other pure metro cities. But as everybody reduces their inflow, you know, we avoid the big capital charges from the Met Council, you know, needing a new treatment plant, needing another interceptor. So I think we've done good work. We've avoided a lot of capital costs that the Met Council may have needed. There's still some more work to do. If we hadn't done that work, if we, you know, decided to be a laggard, you know, our rate would have gone up because our system, our share of the system flow would have gone up. So I think we've kept up. And for a first-string suburb, you know, some of the worst INI potential, we've done a good job in actually getting that issue out where we've made the investment.
Yep.
And we continue to make the investment year after year as we continue that Neighborhood Recon program.
Thanks for that information. And I think as we go about the process of reconstructing streets over time, and it's one of the things Director Miller and his department, your department, works hard on, I think, is assessing when we're redoing streets, what needs to be done underneath the street. You know, what do we need to be doing with respect to stormwater management, repair of pipes, putting in sleeves, stormwater, not only stormwater management, but sanitary sewer system management as well. So thanks for all that good work. And now we're about halfway through that project of redoing our streets, and so, yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape. So thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. You brought a guest with you this evening.
Yes, I brought a guest. My friend here, Stephanie Johnson, is going to help me with the presentation. I'll kick it off, and then she'll jump in for a few slides here. So are you ready?
All right, very good.
Thank you. Glad to be here tonight. Thank you so much. We're giving a preview to the Clean Water Strategy vision tonight and seeking your guidance on the vision. We want to preview the proposed vision and the values and goals that that vision is based off of, and then plan to bring a decision to you on that Clean Water Strategy vision in the future, tentatively planned for April 2024, depending on what feedback we get tonight. And we also wanted to address some comments and questions from our August 15 work session. So why have a Clean Water vision? It's important that we establish these strategic objectives. We're looking for guidance on the vision and the goals so that we can focus on meeting them in a systematic, risk-based, prioritized, and cost-effective manner. We have the opportunity to set local priorities, service levels, and have an impact on the pace of achievement for Clean Water. Staff is recommending a Clean Water vision in which shallow lakes would be managed for an outcome which prioritizes wildlife habitat and natural aesthetic views. And the vision sets the framework and is the foundation for the strategy. So this is really the square one where we need some feedback on the vision before we get into the details of what that implementation plan might look like. So here's the proposed Clean Water vision, which is Edina's water bodies are in a healthy ecosystem equilibrium where waters are clear, safe, and accessible. We do that through preventing pollution. We control pollutants at their source and help people do their part. Mitigating pollution, we build, operate, and maintain infrastructure and take actions to capture and remove pollutants. And then protecting and restoring ecological processes. We protect and restore natural ecosystems on land and in water. And we framed up those Clean Water Strategy values and goals over the last year. Values and goals are framed by the community values that are described in the established budget pillars, city values, quality-of-life surveys, and regulatory and stakeholder requirements. We further refine these based on public feedback that we received last summer. And the proposed Clean Water Strategy vision was developed from these values and goals that we tested with the public. So I'm not going to read these to you. They're in your packet. But the high-level value statements, ecosystems are in a healthy equilibrium, water is clear, and environmental benefits are sustained. And then the goals beneath that value statement. People are connected to land and water in reciprocity, both caring for nature and enjoying the benefits of a healthy environment. City actions align to do the most good towards measurable, desirable Clean Water outcomes, leveraging creativity and innovation. And all people have access to water and the cultural values and environmental benefits they provide. So the discussion we're hoping to have tonight is related to these values and goals and the vision that was drafted based on these values and goals. So a little bit more background information and to respond to those comments and questions from August. Why establish a Clean Water strategy in the first place? Water bodies in Edina are shallow, failing to meet standards, permanently and significantly altered by urbanization, and stressed by climate change. We've got a tough problem ahead of us. And shallow lakes can exist in one of two states, either clear or turbid. And so Stephanie is going to help me describe this.
Thank you, Jessica. So as Jessica mentioned, the natural water bodies in the city of Edina are what we call shallow lakes. Shallow lakes are defined by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources as lakes that are 15 feet in depth or less. Why that's important is because at this depth, sunlight can reach through the full water column generally and get to the bottom of the lake, which facilitates plant growth. And you can see that in the image here in front of you and the kind of the infographic that we've put together that helps to elicit and show this idea of kind of plant growth in these shallow lake ecosystems. As Jessica had mentioned, shallow lakes tend to exist and stabilize themselves in kind of one of two different states. The first is what we call a clear state. The second is what we call turbid state. You can see that, again, summarized here in this infographic. I'll start first by explaining what we mean when we say clear state. In a clear state, what we tend to see is that diverse native plant communities are within the lake and without, or throughout the water column. So you can see that here, kind of established along the bottom of the lake, up onto the shoreline. The benefit- The benefits that these native plant communities then can provide is that they help to stabilize the sediments. So the roots help to hold that in. That's important because then as we get windy conditions, we don't get re-suspension of those sediments up into the water column. The plants also provide a nice habitat for fish communities and vertebrates, which are really important again to the health of the ecosystem, help to filter out different pollutants, et cetera, within the lakes. And then lastly, those plant communities help to actually take up some of the nutrients that are within the water column and hold it. Those nutrients would otherwise be available to algae to consume and then proliferate. Contrasting that with what we call turbid state, you know, you see kind of the opposite there. So typically when shallow lakes are in a turbid state, we see that they have excessive amounts of algal growth. There's a lot of suspended sediment. They tend to look really murky. I'm going to show some images of what this looks like on the next couple of slides here. And, and it just kind of, you know, provides that, that state that I'm, that I'm showing here, kind of talking about where we've got just more suspended sediments in the water column. That then blocks out the light and prevents it from being able to make its way into the water column, which again tends to this, then exacerbate that condition where we don't have all those native plants and the benefits that they're providing. So it's kind of a double-edged sword there is what we see with these turbid systems. Unfortunately, once a lake moves its way into a turbid system, it can be extremely difficult to move it back and it takes a lot of concerted effort. We do work with communities to, to do this, to come in and make plans to do that, but it takes a lot of concerted effort over years and lots of strategies to kind of try to move things back.
Ms. Johnson, if you don't mind, I want to ask council members if they want to ask questions as you go through your presentation, if you'd be comfortable with that.
I think that's okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking like, like, do we, are we, are we in a turbid condition with some of our lakes that we need to worry about?
Yes.
So you're, you're going to get to that.
And I will show a few photos of that just to, I think, elicit on that, or show that a little bit more. So as I move to the next slide here, you'll see again some, some images that maybe look familiar. So this is what turbid state of, of lakes tends to look like. So we've got two images here from Lake Cornelia in 2020 and 2022. Again, you can kind of get that sense where it's, you know, the water's pretty murky. So whether that's sediments or algae, that's cloudy in the water there. The other example that we've got here is, is actually a shallow lake in Lionel Lakes. But I think what, you know, what we're trying to show here is that in this condition, we've actually got a lot of algae that's growing in the lake. And so you can kind of see that scummy, scummy condition up on the shoreline there. As I pointed out on the last slide, you know, when lakes are in a turbid condition, oftentimes we see less, less plants. To some, that might seem like an attractive state for the lake because maybe there's less plants to impede boating or, you know, other recreational uses on the lake. However, you know, as we described, really it's, it's not a healthy balance for the ecosystem. So, you know, we might have a situation where we've got a lake that has less plants, but we also have higher algal growth and potentially even a situation where we're seeing, you know, situation or conditions that might result in harmful algal blooms and therefore, you know, a health concern for folks to get accessing the water. And then my final slide here shows that contrast of what a clear condition looks like. So in these images, you can see diverse plant communities, several different species. You can see how those, those plants do make their way up in the water column. So, you know, in some situations, they're, they're pretty close to the top there. You can also see how the lake tends to be clearer, you know, the, the water column. Again, you can kind of see down into it. So a couple of different examples here, one being Melody Lake. It's a nice, nice picture of that lake there. And then another one up near Brainerd, which, you know, admittedly out a little further, maybe less urban stressors on this one, but I think just helps to show what the condition of a clear water system looks like. Any other questions? I'll hand it, okay.
So with the turbid, a lot contributes to that and invasive plants do contribute to turbid waters, true?
Invasive plants can contribute to turbid waters. That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So one of the concerns that I keep hearing from residents is that, and we have had residents try to address invasive plants like purple loosestrife and get nowhere and kind of get shut down. And so I'm wondering is, and I know the DNR has information and views purple loosestrife as something that is worth dealing with and other cities like Richfield do as well. And I'm just kind of wondering, what is the value of having a policy that ignores certain invasives and just kind of says, we're not going to do anything with it?
So I'm going to speak maybe more to what we typically see when we come in and put together lake management strategies to try to move toward clear water and move from that turbid state to the clear state. And then I'll maybe let city staff speak to policies if, if that's okay. So typically when we come in, you know, and we're, we're working with a community to look at a turbid, a lake that's in a turbid condition, we'll do what we call a lake management plan. And so we'll say, you know, what are all the stressors that are acting on this lake and have gotten us to this place in the first place? You know, so we typically have a lot of pollutants that are coming in off the watershed. Maybe we've got pollutants that are being released up from the sediments. And then often we have vegetation considerations that, that we're looking at as well. Typically, what we're seeing, some of the primary drivers as far as the invasive aquatic species that are big impediments to water quality or tend to really contribute to poor water quality are going to be two primary invasive plants, which is curly leaf pondweed and Eurasian watermeal foil. So we'll see that as a pretty typical strategy that communities will look at is to say, let's, let's look at managing those plant communities if needed for us to then go in and do other in-lake management. So it might be an alum treatment or other types of needs. Typically, when we, when we're trying to move a lake from a turbid condition to a clear water condition, there's kind of a, a menu of things that come together and several management strategies that, that get put into place. And then that, that vegetation management happens so that we can open up space for those native plant communities to then come back in and reestablish and to slowly start improving the water quality. So I think I can speak to those as kind of the two primary aquatic invasive plants that we see that are getting managed for the purposes of clean water. And then I'll maybe hand to Jessica just to talk more about city policies around other plants.
Sure. And purple loosestrife is not a, if, if we're trying to get to clean water, there are other things that we would manage before we manage purple loosestrife. We are managing purple loosestrife through our land management program. So we've invested, we're managing hundreds of acres more since the 2015 park strategic plan. So Braemar with the Gulf Course Reconstruction Project was probably our first major reinvestment in natural resources. We're managing things like purple loosestrife and buckthorn and all the other invasives there. With the Weber Park, we're managing purple loosestrife, buckthorn, all those invasives now that we're in that space. We're going to do the same thing at Bredesen. A couple of meetings ago, you guys approved our $500,000 grant from the Minnesota DNR to manage, restore about 31 acres in Bredesen Park. We have Weber Park, this project that you've already acknowledged where we're making that investment there with Fred Richards and this other Braemar work that's happening now with the mountain biking trails. As we're bringing on more acres in our natural areas management, we're capturing it in that space. For the area of the small bodies of water that feed into Lake Nancy and Lake Cornelia, purple loosestrife has really taken over that pond behind the Normandy Apartments. So, and I know historically people are interested in trying to do it. And so it's, what, what can residents do who live in that part of Edina? Is there any help from the city or should we organize? I mean, what do we do?
So first I'll say on the, on the public side, we're chipping away at those areas. So around Lake Cornelia, we're doing land management and purple loosestrife is on that control list. Wooddale Path right between Lake Nancy and Otto Pond is another one that we've, we're in year two of restoring that, the, the path on either side of it. And that's where we're capturing purple loosestrife control. We have a lot of acres to go. We've invested in hundreds of acres since that 2015 plan and directive from the council at that time to do that, but we haven't made it everywhere yet. And we probably won't make it to those small ponds for a while because we have other priority parks that we're currently working in.
Is there room for residents to step up and take action?
I think we could certainly put together some resources to help people take care of, on their private property. On the public side, I imagine it's kind of like buckthorn where you could, you could recruit volunteers if they were interested in doing that in those other areas that are not city priorities yet. If they wanted to do that, we could model it after the buckthorn control, which is we, the city has priority areas we're working on and we're taking away through those acres. And we can help people that are interested in volunteering on those public lands or resources for them on their private lands. And then there's also the, with purple loosestrife, there is a biocontrol option where there are beetles that kind of boom and bust, just like purple loosestrife booms and busts. And so when there's a lot of purple loosestrife out there, the beetle population booms shortly after that. And then when there's a lot of beetles out there, then you see a bust in the purple loosestrife population. And that's just kind of the cycle that that plant goes through.
One of my concerns is as I look at, you know, what we're supposed to vote on, I see these charts with detriment listed, no small temporary benefit, resource benefit. And certain things are just grayed out. And I don't want to be in a position where we're being asked to essentially say, it's okay to ignore this particular invasive. So I want to just get that out there because as I read this, it's hard not to see it that way.
I think from a clean water strategy, if we want to, I think safety was a big theme that we heard at the August work session. If we want to get to that goal, I think purple loosestrife is something that we would invest in all of these other things before we go hard on purple loosestrife. And then I think on the, the land management side, perhaps that's a future presentation where we talk about what we're doing with purple loosestrife from that land management perspective.
Okay. And that, what you just said, we would go hard on other things before we get to purple loosestrife, is a statement where I can understand that, but to present something that seems to imply that we're just going to let this go is troubling.
I think in this clean water lens, purple loosestrife is less important than these other activities, but perhaps I can come back and talk about our land management program.
I just want to know you're not asking us to paint ourselves into a corner.
So this is, so today we're talking about the, the vision, values, and goals is where we're looking for direction. I think a next step could be a potential phase three where we get into a detailed plan of what that could look like. And then we can bring options that say, you know, here are the things we would do. Here's the cost that would go with them. And we could scale that up or down based on the council's appetite for how quickly you want to move or what that, what that budget would be. So I think that's a detail that we could sort out in phase three.
Remember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at a really high level, we just had a presentation on stormwater. All of our lakes are really stormwater management things. I think they're mostly sort of occurred because of development in our city. So is there hope, given the fact that the water populates them, not because they were lakes originally, but they were swamps or marshes? With all the runoff, can we actually achieve clean water, given the runoff from development in town?
Stephanie, do you want to give your take on, on achievability?
I think that's a very fair question. These water bodies are under a lot of stress, like a lot of urban water bodies are. And particularly shallow lake ecosystems are much more sensitive to, you know, large influxes of pollutants and, you know, they, they get warmer and, and they have a lot of stressors on them. In the context of can we move toward clear water? I mean, I think we've got, you know, a couple of examples where you do have at least a few resources that are certainly in better conditions than others. I know through some of the work that, that our firm has done with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, looking at a few of these lakes, management plans have been put in place and definitely that is the goal, right? We're moving in that direction and strategies are being, starting to get implemented, I think even this year. So that is the vision. That is the direction that we're moving. As far as what the ultimate outcome will be, I think we, we feel optimistic that we can definitely move them to a better place. I won't make any promises in terms of what the exact outcome will be in, in the, you know, next 10 years, let's just say.
But we can, if we act, there's hope of progress. There, I'm just, I just, I worry so much because it, when Jessica talked to us in our work session, I think is why we wanted to go into this more detail. It's either turbid or it's clean, but there's nothing sort of halfway. And so it's a binary system. And if we're going to undertake this and we're never going to leave turbid, I, I want to get a sense of that. But it sounds like Melody Lake, it's working. And are there other cities in the metro area where the plan is working?
I'll say there's definitely other cities that have seen progress as they've been implementing strategies. Shallow Lake Management and some of these in-lake strategies, it's relatively new in the context of some of the work that we do in the water resources field to, to try to manage these types of systems. But, but I will definitely say that yes, there are lakes that, that we can point to and look at to say progress is being made. And so I think, I think that that's a, that's a hopeful message.
Okay, good. Yeah.
I also want to respond to that. Yes, are there other cities that are kind of making that progress? And I think what we're seeing in a lot of other communities is watershed districts are leading a lot of that work or a watershed management organization or a joint powers organization. But as far as like a city setting a vision and goals and striving towards that, I think there's not a lot of examples of that. And so, and I think that's the, the point of our Clean Water Strategy was we have, we have the ability, the opportunity to say on a city scale that we are going to set some goals. A lot of other communities are kind of leaning on their watershed organizations that are involved and so do we still. We're great partners with them and we're hoping to establish this Clean Water Strategy so that at a city scale, we can be marching all in the same direction in a line all the way up to the top. And then hopefully we can impact that pace of achievement and get there a little bit quicker. Then we can also select our local priorities instead of, you know, leaning on what the watershed districts have said are their priorities. There is some overlap there, right? Lake Cornelia, Lake Edina, Arrowhead, Indian Head, those are priorities of the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. And those pretty well align with the priorities that staff has put together, this framework and potential prioritization list. But then you look at the Minnehaha Creek Watershed and, and that watershed district has other priorities in other parts of their watershed. They don't have any lakes identified in Edina as a priority, but we do in our potential prioritization. So I think this is an opportunity at a city scale, which is not common, to say, we have local priorities and we have local goals and we can put in a plan to drive us there hopefully a little bit quicker than if we were to just be supportive of our partners, which we still would be, but we might have a chance to get there quicker.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a more scientific question. And that is, once we begin this work, how fragile are the lakes if one of the aquatic invasive species comes? Is it fairly easy to remedy that? Because I know you can't like scoop the bottom out once you've got the plants planted. So what's the risk of going backwards with the invasive species once we go down this path?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And actually I was going to tack one more thing onto that and it feeds right into this. So as natural systems, most of these or many of these will require active management. And that's just something to know, right? It's not, I mean, we live again in a dynamic system. They're going to continue to receive loading and, and we're going to continue to, you know, city of Edina is going to continue to do all of those strategies to try to reduce pollutant loadings from the various sources. But I don't want to leave with the impression of we're going to do it once and we're going to walk away and everything's going to be great. I mean, they do, they, we need to continue to monitor them and, and address things as they come up. The goal when you're doing the in-lake management is to free up space for those natives to rebound. I know I was just talking to a colleague this morning about an example lake where, where they worked in, where they went in, they did some of this, they applied what's called an alum treatment, so kind of a sediment treatment. And they said water quality looked really good for a few years. They got, they got good rebound of the native plants. Things came back. And then it started to shift again a little bit, you know, some of those invasives started to come back in. So they had to kind of do a little more management and, and keep things at bay. But I, I think again, the idea is that once we get it to a point where we've got a healthier, where we're closer to that balance and that, that spot that we're in the clear state, that the system is more robust and able to, a little more resilient to responding to some of those stressors.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Oh, did you have a follow-up or?
I was just going to keep going here in the presentation and kind of feed into that a little bit.
I'll just jump in here. One obvious segue from remember Jackson's question is what city?
cities are making progress?
We were talking about this just yesterday. City of Eagan, they've seen a lot of progress. They've got some staff that are really zoomed in on their lakes. They've seen progress there. City of Apple Valley has a group that's made a lot of progress. We, in our Phase 1 of Clean Water Strategy, we did that kind of survey of who's doing this well, and Apple Valley was summarized in that. But they're a little bit different in that they're really relying on their watershed management. Their governance is slightly different there with their watershed partners.
What are the strategies we can employ to try to minimize the amount of pollutants that come into the, into our water system? You know, like runoff from 50th and France, or, you know, the streets of Morningside, as it moves into that pond?
Yeah, I think there's some, you know, source control, first of all, if we can just keep that pollutant, those pollutants out of the streets in the first place. So erosion control regulations, things like street sweeping are really high of return thing. Infrastructure, like the Roslin Filter Basin, kind of cleans that, dissolves phosphorus out of water before it gets to Lake Cornelia. There are several things that can happen on the landscape. There's also several things that can happen within the water body itself. So curly leaf pond weed control, invasive fish management, sediment pollutant loading management. There's a lot of potential things, and I've got kind of like a schematic of what a clean water vision service level could look like, where we were kind of just spitballing without coming to a detailed plan of, here's what's in the realm of possibilities of things we could do.
Member Risher.
One of the images that I wanted to be sure we covered tonight was from your August presentation, where it showed all of the interconnectivity between the very shallow lakes that we have. And I want to make sure that whatever strategy we do, and it's great to hear about Eagan and Apple Valley, but are they shallow lakes? Or are those more deep lakes? And, you know, just asking what communities that have similar situations to ours, very shallow lakes that are interconnected. And that interconnected piece is critical, you know, particularly when you think about what's feeding into Lake Cornelia. So, maybe later, we can get that image on, but I think it's important that we cover that. The other thing, prioritizing waters with public access, and, you know, looking at Lake Pamela, which is under Tier 3, but is certainly a place that is very much open and enjoyed by the public, and really maybe thinking about emphasizing that public access and the priority for those water bodies more.
I'll go back to another question I had. What percent of the problems in our water bodies are caused by pollutants, by runoff? Is there any way to quantify that?
I'll take a stab at this, and then Stephanie can fill in. So, the watershed district has looked at Lake Cornelia, Lake Edina, Arrowhead Lake, and Indian Head, to say, not necessarily, like, where did it come from to get us to where we are, but essentially, a plan to say, "Okay, where is the pollution coming from now?" It won't tell the story of kind of the last 50 years, but it'll say, "What do we have now?" So that you can use that to figure out what management strategies make sense. And for those four water bodies, they found that the internal load, like, within the lake, was significant for all of them. So things like alum treatment, or alum iron treatments, to bind up the phosphorus that's coming from the lake bottom, is really valuable thing to do. And then you can also see how much of that pollution is coming from the watershed through runoff. And then you can start to look at, you can analyze where in the watershed it might be coming from. So for Lake Edina, for example, the most valuable thing you can do to improve Lake Edina is do work in Lake Cornelia, because they've done some analysis to say, "That's where a lot of that load is coming from." So all the work we're doing in Lake Cornelia, or I should say, the watershed district is doing, whether we're partnering with them, is benefiting Lake Edina. When you're in Lake Cornelia, and you say, "Okay, what's the next most valuable thing that we can do for Lake Cornelia?" We can look at upstream water bodies. They may or may not be the next most valuable thing. For Lake Cornelia, it turns out, the Seltail Watershed, which is relatively huge compared to Lake Cornelia, is the next most valuable place to make an investment. So I don't think just the being connected or not is the only thing to look at. I think it depends. And that's something that you get into when you get into the details of a lake-specific detailed management plan, where you can kind of use that analysis to figure that out.
Right, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So we wanted to give you a sense for where, how the city's clean water strategy fits in at a national, state, regional, and watershed district scale. And this is described in more detail in the staff report, but essentially, the story here is that the clean water strategy aligns with the priorities and goals at all of these other scales for clean water. And then, cities typically don't have a clean water strategy, vision, strategy, or goal that often rests at that watershed district scale, but we think there's an opportunity to set those priorities and goals at the city scale. So here's where we are at, at the city scale. We're currently doing the minimum to meet our regulatory and stakeholder requirements. So some regulatory requirements come down from the MPCA, and then our stakeholder requirements are watershed district partners. So right now, we don't have a vision for clean water. And when we don't have a vision, it's hard to program or strive for an outcome that's undefined. So we're doing actions that sometimes strive toward an outcome, and sometimes, they don't. So, development of this clean water strategy was something that in 2018, when we had our Water Resources Management Plan before the council, we included that in our Water Resources Management Plan by the request of the council at that time, because we could see the gap between the service that was being delivered and residents' expectations, and we wanted to get to clean water faster than our minimum actions would allow. So the vision and the strategic plan would set the framework for the actions that the city undertakes. And we're really eager to get your feedback on the vision, and those goals and values, so that we can be strategic and put together a more detailed plan for you to consider. So we have an opportunity to set those local priorities and service levels. So this is a quick status quo snapshot of what is happening right now. What are the priority water bodies? Well, they're whatever the state and the watershed districts say they are. The priority pollutants and stressors are established by those state standards. And we are meeting legal requirements. We're doing the minimum in our MS4 permit, focusing on regulatory compliance, not necessarily an outcome at a water resource. And we respond to requests for aquatic plant management, which in some cases can make meeting the state and watershed district goals more difficult. Meanwhile, watershed district is leading, implementing projects per their lake studies. We are great partners with our watershed districts, and we've, a lot has been achieved in Edina, based on the work that they are leading and that we are supporting. So, as far as those activities, this is what's currently occurring in the status quo, general chemical destruction of native submerged aquatic plants, and general chemical control of native lily pads. That's something that we're doing. That's actually making that clean water vision, as proposed, more tricky to meet. And then there are other things that have, we've put in this no benefit, or small benefit, or temporary benefit category. And then we're doing some activities that have some resource benefit. But you can see on that major resource benefit, none of those activities are currently happening under this status quo level of service. So this is just kind of, like, for illustrative purposes only, we haven't gotten to coming up with a detailed plan yet, but what could that look like? Well, we could select our own priorities. They would be in combination with the state and watershed district. We would focus on particular pollutants. We would continue to meet our legal and stakeholder requirements, but we could have an impact on how quickly we achieve those goals. We could have an impact on the pace and the outcome. And so we would propose something that kind of stops those, or phases out, or replaces those detrimental activities with something else, and then invest more in some of those, the summer resource benefit. So, street sweeping is bolded there, because we could always do more street sweeping. It's one of the highest value, lowest cost things you can do. And then on that major resource benefit, we could do things like control internal loading from lake sediments. We know from watershed district work, at least in the four lakes that they studied, that that was really important. So we would assume that that could happen, that could be important in other water bodies too, although we would get, do some analysis to verify that. Rough fish control, more clean water infrastructure, encouraging and protective, encouraging and protecting native aquatic plants that sequester nutrients. So I want to get into a little discussion here on this proposed clean water vision, and get your feedback. And then, if I could respond to one more thing from Member Jackson about, you know, how do we prevent something, or how do we kind of capture something before it becomes a problem? As we were iterating on this clean water vision over the last year, we added this word "protect." Before, it was just, "We're going to restore ecological processes," but that kind of assumes we're going to just wait for things to be terrible before we get involved. But I think there's a big opportunity to be more proactive, and I envision a detailed management plan where we're kind of doing some status checks on things like curly leaf pond weed. We're already doing that in a lot of water bodies, but we could do that. We could look for goldfish before they become really problematic. There's other things you can do to kind of keep track of the health of a water body before there's a major problem. So, anyway, I'll stop that. There's the discussion here. We can either have this discussion now, or we can pull up the map for Member Risher. You guys can tell me where you want to go.
All right, thank you for that presentation. It was really thought-provoking. Thoughts from council members? But, Member Jackson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, thanks to both of you. This is a really helpful presentation, good for the public to hear, and for us to get our head around it. As you're talking, I'm thinking about our values viewfinder, and for decision-making. And so, health, equity, environment, and stewardship. And it seems as though, you know, you're thinking about that. I'm, for health, not only are we talking about getting rid of the poisons that are in the water with the blue-green algae, but also mental health. And one of the things I, was a theme at the National League of Cities last week, was nature and everything, and experiencing nature. And so, just seeing a tree actually lowers your blood pressure. So, thinking about how we can have these water bodies contribute to the mental health, so things like prioritizing near a school, or looking at census tracts, and so that goes then into the equity part of it. And that's when we're going to set our priorities, trying to get the most bang for our buck. So not just clean water, but that mental health aspect and equity aspect of it, so we can hit the most people who need the most support right away. So if, maybe it is upstream that we take the action, but the goal is to get those areas that need a little extra help. And then stewardship, I love how that you ended about the preventative stuff, because that's what we want to do. We want to take care of what we have once we've done it. So that's, this is really, so for my feedback, again, I think we talked about this in the work session, health is really, really important. And that's should be, that's my top priority, is to get the poison out of our water, so that if a pet goes in there, if a kid goes in there, they're not at risk of getting sick. But looking at that also through that values viewfinder. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate the content and the conversation. Your specific ask, in terms of vision and goals, I support the strategic vision that you have. I think what the challenge will be, and it's on one of your slides, where you put the dollar signs, right, associated with activities. I think that's where the rubber will kind of hit the road. But setting that strategic vision, oh, now I got to get back to it. I particularly like protecting and restoring ecological processes.
I think it's Page 10.
Okay. No, I got it up here. She doesn't need to show it. So I'm just going through the vision. I particularly appreciate that we added "protect." And as I recall, we were having this conversation about, do we really want to focus on clear, or not, or want to balance, or what have you? I do like saying that we want our waterways to be clear and safe. And I particularly like the idea of saying you want equilibrium within the ecosystem. And so I totally am in line with the values and the strategy. When we come back, it'll be good to really understand, not just that it's going to cost a lot of money, because it will, but really, just the time horizon. So, we talk a lot in other projects about, let's be clear, let's be clear in the outcomes. So, you know, how much are we spending? What measures and outcomes are we going to judge success on as we move forward? And so I, for sure, would want to see something like that. And then, you're going to have to really be good at telling us no. Say, "Yeah, we can't do that. Understand." And you did a good job of that today, of articulating the priorities. And so, the other thing I was going to mention, I like the idea, and this was in one of your answers, where you were able to articulate, "Well, no, the priority here is this lake because." And so helping us kind of walk through the logic behind where we start and what we do is going to be key, as you kind of outline everything on a timeline with clear objectives. And I think if we do that, I think we'll be in a much better place in the future than where we are today. So, thanks for the presentation.
Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you. I think that Member Pierce did a really perfect job of summarizing really how I feel. I think that this feels so much closer to a plan, and a plan that has that story that I can understand and kind of lean into. And I like summarizing it as, how are we prioritizing the clear water, and what are the specific action steps that we need to do to take to get to that? And then, where are there things that we've been doing that, like you even kind of mentioned, right, we didn't have that clear vision or that clear goal? Where can we take things off of our list, or phase those out? I think that that's really important. I love the idea of pulling it into time horizons, because that's going to be probably the biggest lever that we have, is how aggressively are we investing into this? And what is that, as I think Member Jackson was kind of alluding to, like, that hopefulness, right? Like, how do we met, like, balance those components to it? And I think that bringing that into the conversation of stormwater management and all of these other factors, climate change, that we have to think about as a city, I think that this is just one of those many pieces that we're going to have to layer in. And so having some different options of most aggressive to a more balanced, phased approach, that still gets us hope, as much as we can, articulating the short-term benefits that we hope to see. And then, where does potentially our confidence in our hopefulness to be able to achieve clear water start to dwindle, the less aggressive that we are in those remediations? But overall, I do, I like the direction, and I just echo Member Pierce. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Risher.
I don't know if we could get that image up. And actually, can you stop for just a second here, or go back to that last slide that you had? Sorry about that. But, just the vision, we control pollutants at their source and help people do their part. And I think, opening it up so that people throughout the community, if there is interest, they can participate, is really important. And I know in the past, you had to form an association. And maybe if there's a way to have a pathway toward being a water steward, if you will, and modeling it on, I like the idea of modeling it on the Buckthorn project. I think that would be good. But echoing what Member Jackson said, I think it is about health, and it is about being able to improve the environment. And if we can get more native species being able to grow, and we can have better bird habitat and all of that, that can make a profound difference in how a water body looks, even if it is one of the least prioritized. even if it is one of the least prioritized. Okay? And I think when we talk about priority, just kind of tempering that with, well, it's a priority to the people who live right next to it, okay, in that apartment complex. And, you know, we need to be thinking about that as well. So I, I see some value in the direction that we're going. And so I did just want to call that out, and then if we can look at the flow.
Is there a particular one? There were two.
Right. That one's perfect right there. But, you know, just seeing how, you know, and I understand, you know, that there are greater sources of, you know, impact on Lake Cornelia than you could say, you know, Lake Otto or Lake Nancy. However, very visually, what we're seeing happening and that people are seeing and residents are seeing is just invasives taking over. And it's very disconcerting. And so being able to make room for them to be able to see change and, you know, I don't know if there's any room for having, I know we have a huge crew of people who work during the summer and maintain the gardens along the promenade and all of that. I don't know if there's any room for partnering with the park system so that we could have, you know, some improvements and just kind of build that in. And then educational efforts would be fantastic. Some people were talking about, wouldn't it be great if we had signage along that connector path that leads between, in that little area, the Wooddale, the walking path that gets you down to cross over the bridge? Like, could there be signage that tells you what an invasive is, what it looks like, all of that? I think there's just so much that we could do in terms of education and, you know, reflecting the interest people want to participate and are looking for that. So I really wanted to underscore that. And I think that's it.
To answer your question directly, as Member Pierce said, do I think we need a clean water strategy? I think we do. And do we want to move towards a strategy that involves clear water? I agree with my colleagues on that. I was really struck by Ms. Johnson's comment that natural systems require active management. And I guess that's something we probably take for granted in Minnesota, but we think natural systems ought to be able to take care of themselves because they're natural. But we just heard a presentation on stormwater management. Every system we have in our city requires active management. And what we're thinking about doing as a council is making a commitment to really correct past sins. It's like deferred maintenance. You know, it's like, it's like somebody came and told us, Director Milner just came and told us that, hey, we got to replace half of the stormwater management pipes in the town at the same time, because nobody's been doing this for 50 years. We don't like being in this position, but we're not a deferred maintenance council, and we're not a deferred maintenance town with respect to anything. So I don't know why we think we should be a deferred maintenance town with respect to our, our water, which we all treasure, I think, in this state and in this, this community. We want to take care of what we own. And so we, we don't want to take it for granted and granted, and maybe we'll get the comeback player of the year award out of this. I don't know. But we'll leave that up to your good work and the work of, of your consulting engineer to try to get us there. But I think we want to see, we want to see progress towards clear water and be proud of what we have as natural resources. And I think you've heard our council say, we're willing to make that commitment and take this on and see, see what we can do about it and make up for lost time. Member Rissar?
Just from our August meeting, though, I, the one thing that I hesitate on, and I think binary was a word that Member Jackson used, and I just, I want to make sure that the ask that is coming before us is something that we all understand and is crystal clear. So looking forward to more detail on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We're going to move on now to reports and recommendations. That portion of the agenda has three items on it. And the first one is a resolution accepting donations. And is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-27, accepting donations?
So moved. A second?
Jackson moves number Agnew's second to the adoption of Resolution 2024-27, accepting donations on behalf of the City of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2024-27, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Curried? Excuse me. This, this reporting period with respect to those donations, the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, they're always there when you need them, aren't they? The Police Department, almost $1,500, $1,400 worth of assistance for the Public Safety Recognition Bank, but that was really quite an event. And then some in-kind donations to the Senior Center and some cash contributions as well. The Edina Lions Club, a very generous gift of $400 for general use. All those names will be posted on the, on the city's website as donors. So thanks to everybody that contributed and every organization as well. And then we're on to talking about adding to the capital improvement plan, the authorized increase in bonding for Community Health and Safety Center. We've got some of our public finance consultants with us, a public finance consultant with us, not some, but one. And our own finance director with us this evening. I will turn it now to Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor, Members of Council. This evening, we have a request to you regarding the capital improvement bonding that the city is, is going to do in, in connection with our Fire Station Two project. There has been some, some data changes, some, some numerical changes in the fiscal impact. We've had a chance to work those through with our, our financial advisor, Mr. Anhut, and would like to present that to you tonight and get in action on this in front of the council this evening.
Thank you, Manager Neil. Mr. Anhut, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Nick Anhut from Ellers and Associates. On March 6, the council held a public hearing on this item to increase the amount of bonding for the facility project. That was in response to a need to increase the budget based on the actual bids that were received for the project that is underway. I'm not aware of any comments or anything that was brought up during the course of the public hearing, but we did want to clarify some of the, the numbers. So the increase is to authorize an additional $8.3 million of bonding for this project. The council had previously in 2022 already authorized the remaining 39 million. This action tonight is a consideration of a resolution to adopt that change, that amendment to the CIP plan. And that would trigger a 30-day petition period for the public. So in the course of the next 30 days, the public could come forward with a petition to make the matter subject to a referendum. But once that period is closed after 30 days, then authority for the debt falls on the council to approve, and we anticipate that that would come before the council as soon as May or potentially June of this year, once we wrap that in with some of the other capital needs of the city for streets and utility improvements that are underway. Council has already adopted a $2.3 million levy in anticipation of paying back the anticipated bonds for the facility project. With this increase of 8.3 million, we are anticipating an additional 499,000 will be needed. That could take effect as soon as 2025, but we would not know that until we actually go out and price the bonds and complete the funding for this project. So that's a worst-case estimate that we've put forward, and it just provides some color to your decision this evening.
Good. Thanks for that thorough backgroundening. Anybody have questions for Mr. Anhut? Great. And what you would like, Mr. Anhut, and what our finance director would like, is a passage of Resolution 2024-21, which would amend the capital improvement plan to authorize the increase in bonding for the Community Health and Safety Center, which is Fire Station Number Two, in an amount not to exceed 8.3 million.
Correct.
All right. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adopt Resolution 2024-21, which would amend the capital improvement plan to authorize increased bonding for the Community Health and Safety Center, Fire Station Number Two, in an amount not to exceed 8.3 million. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Curried? The motion's adopted. All right. Thanks for being with us. Thanks for your patience this evening. Sal, thanks for being with us, too. And now Director Milner, we're going to talk about something that drawn a lot of interest, not, well, by council members, neighbors, everybody is thinking about the replacement of this pedestrian bridge across the, across the crosstown.
Exactly.
Near Rose Court. And we're going to, you've got some ideas on what you'd like us to do tonight, and we're going to find out if we are on the same page or not.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, for that kickoff. Let's talk about the Roslin Park Pedestrian Bridge, and I'm looking for an approval recommendation this evening. So if we take a step back and look at the big picture, city goals and values related to bike and ped movements and the master plan, we have Vision Edina that states we want to continue to promote and develop sidewalks, trails, and bike networks to improve that accessibility and connectivity throughout the city and beyond. In our comprehensive plan, it's noted that we want to improve that mobility for residents, visitors, and businesses, including those with transportation disadvantages, through the creation and maintenance of a balanced system of transportation alternatives that includes pedestrian, bicyclists, and motorists. And then even getting in the more detail, Living Streets Plan, we want to ensure that Edina is a place where transportation, utilizing all modes, is equally safe and accessible. And we gave you some pictures there on the right-hand side of the various different modes that we see using our facilities. And if we talk about the Bike and Ped Master Plan, it's really that city framework for becoming more walkable and bikable. And I recall it was a result of extensive public engagement. We had the quadrant meetings, if you remember. We had open houses and workshops and listening sessions, commission meetings, lots and lots of feedback to develop that plan. And then during the comp plan, we looked at the twin loops idea, and that's the graphic on the right with the inner loop and the outer loop. And we're continuing to look at, how do we connect all four quadrants of our city and the schools and the parks and those community destinations with those, those inner and outer loops? And many of our recommendations, our engineering recommendations for this project and others are tied to that concept of those loops. And addressing ADA requirements is an important component of building this, and we lean into all ages and abilities. So that's what the vision for this plan really is, so everybody could use it. And then we get some feedback from our community during the Quality of Life Survey. In 2015 and 17, six out of 10 people more likely to walk or bike with more sidewalks and paths. In 2023, we saw some comments related to a lack of sidewalks and safe bike paths, unsafe for kids to walk to school, and that lack of walkability. And then in general, between 2015 and 2023, we did see some improvements. So we're improving on that ease of walking and biking. And I think we're doing that because we're following that vision in the Bike and Ped Master Plan of being active and building more and wider in a variety of locations, building out the system and reducing those barriers. The system has large gaps that increases that use, use of ease, if we can reduce those barriers and lessen those gaps. So now the specific topic for tonight is the Roslin Park Ped Bridge. This is just a list of meetings that we've had discussions over the last year, starting in April of last year. So many resident meetings, city council meetings, Better Together website was up and taking feedback on multiple occasions. We had a big community meeting where three council members were there, again, updating more materials and more materials. So in my opinion, I think it's time for a decision. We're not hearing any new feedback. We're hearing a lot of the repeats from, from the comments over and over again. Again, the picture on the right is what's out there today, not accessible stairs, and we don't maintain it, snow is on it. We are proposing a steel truss bridge over the highway, and we're doing that because we can span all of Highway 62 and the frontage road. It's approximately 200 feet long. It just gets rid of that center pier in the highway, so MINDOT has more opportunities to do whatever they want with Highway 62 in the future. This is just a rendering of a potential kind of lighting concept there on the crossing. And then again, as you would cross over that bridge, it's going to be 10 feet wide and be made of concrete with steel truss with railings that meet ADA requirements, building code, and MINDOT requirements. So let's get into the options. Option 1A with the switchbacks. So this is staff's recommendation. We talked about the MINDOT noise wall and auxiliary lane that they are planning to do. That project's not yet funded. But we did hear from residents that if the wall, noise wall goes up, they prefer to have it screen the bridge. So that would be the blue line. I crossed out that location B because that was a previous discussion. But that really screens, puts the noise wall between the bridge and 64th Street. Some of the items on this, it's approximately in the same location. The switchbacks there are located just east of the Wooddale Path, and that is in the widest portion of the rightway, so it fits the best with the wall, with the ramp and auxiliary lane. I already talked about where they want the wall located, the residents. In this one, it's adjacent to side yards. It's not in front of anybody's house directly, and there'd be an opening for the, for the wall, as you can see, and it's going to be next to the Wooddale Path for that direct connection. Tree removals is part of this. So we had our forestry department look at the trees in there. There's one oak tree that we're, if both projects happen, those trees have to be removed. I mean, that's just a fact. And there's one oak tree in there that's just right where it says slope that just needs to come down in this case. Other trees of lesser quality would also be needed to be removed. So just some graphics, some 3D renderings of this, and I'll show a few others. And then the impacts on Roslin Park, very minimal, a little impact on the Frisbee Golf site, but that could be addressed, and the overhead power lines on the south side. So again, here's a 3D rendering showing that switchback ramp in the park side, but more importantly, on the north side with the noise wall behind it. Here's what it would look like heading eastbound on Highway 62. You can see the opening for the connection to the Wooddale Path. And then again, here's standing on the Wooddale Path. This is really that resident perspective from the north. It's just visible over that 20-foot noise wall. There's that slight opening in there to access the ramps. And this would have looked like without the noise wall. So you can see, then the trees are questionable. They, the consultant just left the trees in, but that's questionable at this point on whether those first few could be. Once the noise wall comes in like this, those trees are most likely gone, and then we would look to see if there's any space remaining to reestablish those trees. Then we looked at a few other options. So option 5B was the long ramps and moving the bridge 470 feet to the west. This one, less support for long ramps, high speeds with bicycles. I don't support this one. There's less space when you get the auxiliary lane, the noise wall, and ramp. I don't know if it can all fit. We think it can, but there's no flexibility. It's really just the bare minimum getting in there, and I don't like doing anything with any flexibility. So we kind of removed this one from consideration, and it's in front of people's front windows of three houses and a side yard. So now you're creating a something that's, they're looking out their main part of their house right at a new facility. I didn't like that idea of moving it for that regard, too. On the south side in Roslin Park, elevated ramps right over the pickleball courts, coming down across the tennis courts, following underneath those power lines. So again, not a very good facility. And just created a few renderings. So here's a rendering, the bird's eye view, looking to the west, what that could look like. And you can really see that impact to the park facilities on the south. And again, it's a whole new structure in front of new homes, right in the, in the front side of those homes. Again, a rendering heading westbound on Highway 62 with those long ramps. And then from Miller's Lane, this is where people had commented that it's a new facility. They would be able to see the railings over that noise wall, so you can just see where the railings get over and start to turn as you enter the bridge at the very top point. So there would be a view there. Now the elevators, option 6A, elevators with stairs or without, and then the south ramp is varied between elevators or with the ramps. So again, this was an idea of the, some of the residents brought this forth. We did some renderings. Here's a rendering of that, what that footprint would look like. With this option, the bridge stays in the same location. The additional elevator buildings would be located near the path, and again, within the widest portion of the rightway. Another elevator in this graphic would be in Roslin Park. So we're building a two, two buildings. They need heating, cooling, electrical power, safety concerns. And again, we talked with our Metro Transit neighbors, they have some of these already in place. They felt the context of this was a little different than what they do. They typically have people that drive up into a parking ramp, get in an elevator, go up over, and then enter a transit vehicle, either a bus or a train. So it's a little different from somebody that has their dog or on a bike that wants to just keep moving and go up and over. So a little different context. They are seeing concerns with people using those elevators for things we don't want them using. So that's a concern. And then the major concern for me again is the accessibility when they're not functioning. So ADA is gone because we have stairs. So when they're out of operation, we, we don't have that access, whereas a ramp is accessible pretty much 100% of the time. Metro Transit- Metro Transit is saying they have a couple of these where they're seeing the elevators out so often that they're looking to build long ramps just so people have access to get up and over. So they're struggling with the elevator issue. Here's another graphic of what that would look like hitting westbound on Highway 62. And then again, from the Wooddale Path, that same perspective. Now, this would be higher because now you've got to house the equipment to operate the elevator. So this would be more visible over the top of the wall. It's a smaller footprint, but a higher elevation of the total structure. And then we had two other options that came in as ideas late in the game. We just wanted to make sure that we gave them some consideration. Again, this is moving the bridge 470 feet to the east. So now we have to span a little bit wider area because of the off-ramp for Valley View Road. This would have a helical ramp. The helical ramp is located in a bunch of old growth oaks. The off-ramp goes down to the parking area of the Aquatic Center or the playground area. There's a filter system. You hear Jessica reference that filter system for Cunyly. We'd have to figure out how to do that. Building next to a lake, there's wetlands on the north, just the constructibility becomes very high, and a lot more trees along that whole north corridor would be removed in this case. Same thing on the option eight, just a little different ramping system. Again, with all the construction challenges, the trees, long ramps, we're building more bridges and more ramps in this regard. I just, we took these off from staff's opinion for a recommendation, but we did review it because we got the ideas from our residents. Construction differences. So I'm just now comparing basically the switchback and the ADA ramps to the elevators. I feel like that's really the discussion here this evening. With elevators, again, you're going to have building, water management, HVAC systems, and electricity. Funding, we have $5 to $6 million. MINDOT's funding is in 2025. I'd really like an answer this evening, so we can still try to use that funding in '25. If we can't meet that timing, we have to ask for them to push it a year back. More steps, more committees. We're not going to lose the funding. It's just more processes that, it'd be cleaner if we could stay with the timeframe they have, their half of the project funded. But if we look at the cost for building the bridge with the ramps and with the elevators, the initial construction cost is approximately the same. It's that long-term maintenance that is much more expensive for elevators. It's about eight times more expensive. And then there's just questions I have. How do we remove snow with elevators? We've got that piece of equipment pictured here. This is how we do it on our bridge and ramps. And then I think about dogs and strollers and bikes. We're going to let them all in the elevators. Dogs, you know, people want to walk over to the park from the north side. So just something to consider when we think about what's going to be in the elevators. Bridge, the actual dollar values of maintenance, bridge is about $2,500 per year. That's just painting and patching. Elevators are up in the $20,000 per year. And again, we got, that's not considering any safety, security, and graffiti stuff that may be needed when you have an elevator. And I touched on the ADA access when it's out of maintenance. And I mentioned the transit agencies. Again, they're seeing those elevators out, and they're looking to add ramps, and they're seeing those elevators used as restrooms or sleeping or other stuff. And it's kind of a confined space. People don't feel safe sometimes in there when the doors close, and they don't know what's on the other side. Better Together, we've opened that up for comment twice now. So we provided all the raw comments to you. We've had people that couldn't apply the comments for this last round. We took emails from them, and Liz entered it into the system. If we couldn't enter them, we just gave you the raw emails and redacted that private information. I really don't like summarizing comments. You guys have it in there, but here's a summary. We're hearing comments for and against elevators. Same thing with option one, for and against. Really heard pretty consistent, no support for those long ramps and those other options. So I feel like those can get taken off. We need aesthetic treatments, and I would say yes. As soon as we know what we're doing, we'll come back with a community plan, an engagement plan on what to do for aesthetics. Noise wall, there's been comments for and against, but that's a separate MINDOT project. I think it's a good project because people are asking for noise reductions in this location for many, many years. Heard comments about leaving the bridge in its existing location, and then of course, all the concerns. We hear about trees, space, bike speed, safety with all the options. And I think we heard this at the community meeting I had at Public Works. I'm trying to balance all those things in the matrix you have and trying to come up with an option that best meets all of the city goals and feedback. So I'm recommending we go with option 1A with switchbacks for these various reading reasons. ADA requirements all the time. More visibility of users when you're on and off it. You can see ahead of you. You can see what's coming. Feel like it's safer, feels safer. There's no confined spaces. There's no impacts to operations. Less trees removed than some of those other options. And again, that context, I think, is important. We're not connecting to a transit facility where somebody drives up, uses an elevator to get on a bridge to cross over and enter a bus or something like that. And then aesthetics, again, we'll bring that back. With a caveat, we've got to work with MINDOT because it's over their highway. They're not going to allow flashing lights and things like that, but we can definitely work with them on what type of aesthetics. So I'm recommending a motion tonight from you to hopefully approve option 1A, and I'd stand for any questions.
Yeah. Thanks for that presentation. Council members, questions for Director Milner? Member Risher.
The one concern, well, I have some concerns, but I know that the residents have spent time planting, I mean, one of them really spent a lot of time and effort putting in trees to help mitigate sound, pollutants, all of that. And I'm just wondering, you know, since we're reconstructing that road to Rose Court anyway, is there any way we can plan to plant trees to replace the ones that come out? I know there's going to be a wall that could make it hard for trees to grow, but they offer so much just in terms of capturing particulate matter, helping keep the air clean. And it just seems as if it would be great if we could kind of mitigate the loss of trees somehow.
I think it's open. I think we need to see, you know, the main area of tree removals is right in here, right? This bank of trees because of the ramp. And I'm also considering the noise wall is going to go back there. So between the two projects, definitely need to be removed. But maybe there's an opportunity, you know, having that flexibility, maybe there's something in between there where we can plant some trees. And then I would look at after MINDOT does the wall further down 64th. This neighbor did some planting right here. We're going to save what they just worked hard with MINDOT and getting that agreement to keep those. Maybe there's an opportunity to use more of those MINDOT beautification grants and continue that tree planting down 64th. But I think we should wait to see where the noise wall project ends up and see what space is left after that.
Do you know the timing of building the noise wall?
Yeah, great question. So I reached out to MINDOT. They are going to committee in April, May of this year to ensure funding. So we've, they're pretty confident they're going to get it. If that's the case, they want to build it in '27, '28, those kind of timeframe. So right now, if we get approval tonight, we're hoping to build the bridge in '25. And about two years later, two to three years later, MINDOT would build the auxiliary lane and the noise wall.
Could trees be kept as long as possible? Maybe they don't have to come down for building the bridge? I mean, all of them?
Yeah, we could. I typically only want to take down what we need to for projects, and then we would require, you know, the MINDOT has their, so yes, we could keep that up for two or three years, whichever ones we don't need to take. I don't see the reason. We'd have to look at, one of the big factors here is construction staging. They're going to have pretty good-sized equipment, and MINDOT's not letting us just close 62 to stage cranes and excavators and stuff like that. So there might be just, there's just not space, but I think we can do our best to try to save. I mean, I'd really love just to save that oak tree as long as possible and then sneak the wall in between it. So, but we can look at that when we get into design and construction staging, definitely.
By when do we have to spend the money that we got from MINDOT or from the state?
Yep. Great question, Mayor. We've got two funding sources. We got the dedicated funding through the legislature last year. That money is through the end of 2027. Then MINDOT contributed $3 million. I don't know the right bucket or the term, but it's federal dollars. They're dedicating $3 million to the project, so it's a $6 million budget. And that is slated in 2025. And that's the money they prefer for us to spend in that time window. We don't have to, but it would be easier for them than to have to try to move that money around. And if we're on track for this evening, I think we can make that happen.
And when you say spent by 2025, the federal money, what does that mean? You're under construction or?
I think we're under contract. We could use it to do the order of the bridge. I think we can order this bridge and pay for materials on hand and do that stuff that we typically do in advance anyway for the contractor. So I think there's mechanisms to make that happen. It might be built towards the end of '25, but I think we can make that happen. And I don't think that's a factor the council needs to really worry about as a decision tonight. Just wanted to make you aware that it'd be nice to keep the schedule moving forward.
Yeah. Well, I think we're all sensitive to the schedule you'd like to be on and appreciate the work that's been done to date. And, you know, at the end of the day, this may be fine. I would just comment that I had a conversation, this goes to the elevator issue. I ran into a friend of mine who's a, he's a Hennepin County attorney, but he does work on the civil side. And he said, don't, he actually lives in the neighborhood. He said, he wouldn't recommend the elevator because they got one down at Target Center. They've replaced it once already. It becomes, it's broken down all the time. It becomes a toilet and all kinds of other things. It becomes a place for people to sleep. And so he had, he was, you know, really negative about the elevator idea. That aside, when we met, and all the neighbors met out at Public Works, I sat there thinking about form and function. And I get the function part of it, and this steel truss bridge, I mean, it looks okay, but to me, this was a chance to really do something special for our community and for the neighborhood and really have something function well. So I probably waited too long to do this myself, but, you know, I Googled the 10 most beautiful pedestrian bridges in the world. They got a whole list. Yesterday, I sent out six or eight emails and made phone calls to Chicago and Calgary. I got one email back. I forwarded to you on a beautiful bridge in Belgium, not Belgium, but in the Netherlands. And it looked to me like the cost of it, based on the information I got from the architects, understanding that we had to traverse here 200 feet, based on your information to me, would be about the same cost as what we'd be spending for this. Be about $6 million. And so it made me think, I didn't really personally want to rush to judgment on this thing. We got a little bit of time. I'd like to see whether any of these other architectural firms around the world that have built these beautiful bridges respond to us. I don't want to be building something that's going to be out of the line from a budgetary standpoint, but I do think we can do better. At least, I think we ought to explore doing better than what we're seeing here with 1A, or any of them, frankly. I just would like a little bit of time, maybe until summertime, to explore some of these other ideas. This is me personally. I don't know how my colleagues feel because we don't talk about this stuff amongst ourselves. I'd just like a little more time to see if there's something that we can do to create something that's really special for the community at a price that, at a price point that makes sense.
Sure. Yeah, I think these were just renderings we put together to show you the scale and the function, right? We haven't done any aesthetics and stuff, but I think your vision is more than just aesthetics that we would do here. So.
Yeah. In fact, Member Jackson's going to comment here, but she just showed me a photo of one of the bridges she was on in Newcastle, England. And it was a beautiful bridge.
It is beautiful. To me, though, the question is these ramps and the space constraints. And so I don't, some of these are big and branching, and then we're really getting into trouble with the street reconstruction and the Roslin Park and everything. So we've spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to get people onto this bridge. And so I think the direction I'm hearing is that we really need to make a decision about the ramps and then what goes between them. We can maybe talk about as we go forward. Is that a fair assessment?
Oh, I don't think, well, go ahead, I mean.
Well, I'll answer. We need to know that you're comfortable ramps. Then we can go back to our consultants, get some of these architectural ideas. How can we make this better from an architectural standpoint?
Well, to me, it's not just the architecture on the span that goes across the bridge. When you look at these bridges, they're beautiful serpentine sort of bridges that incorporate the ramps and the, and the structure across the highway. And there's one down in Chicago. I've got to call into the planning department down there on the BP, what they call the BP Pedestrian Bridge, which was designed by Frank Gehry. And it's, it's got this beautiful sort of meandering effect to it. And yeah, of course, I understand that we're moving into a tight neighborhood on the north side, and we need to be careful about how we land it. And I, and we've got more latitude on the park side, but what I'm seeing here with these ramps, that's, that's not attractive, you know? And so why not see if we can do something a little bit better and still accomplish the goals we need to accomplish from an ADA standpoint? You know, all these bridges these days, I don't care what part of the world they're built in, are going to be ADA compliant. So that's my, that's my, anyway, my thought, but council members may feel differently, and somebody may want to make a motion, see where it goes.
Member Pierce? Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So you answered a couple of questions I had already in terms of the timing with the, the bridge and the wall. One of the things that surprised me, that I just didn't see this in, in the meeting we had at Public Works, residents asking for better examples. So go back to your recommendation, if you could, on the renderings. I didn't realize that in order to get on the bridge, you had to walk onto 62.
No, there's a, there's a, well, there's a separation. Let me see if I got a better graphic. You're not on Highway 62. You're next to it.
But you're on the other side of the.
Well, okay, yeah, that's a better, thanks for restating the question. The residents would rather look, what I've heard, look at the wall than the ramps. So one of the ideas, we could put the wall on this side of the ramps, and then people would stare at it. We heard from the residents, they'd rather look at the wall than people going up and over the ramps because then the people can look into their homes and some of that stuff. So I'm indifferent on what side the wall is. This is what I heard from the residents.
Well, so I asked that because just from a safety standpoint, this seems like maybe we wouldn't want to do that. But I'm, I'm sure you're going through the process. But I think that, for me, that kind of might lean a little bit more towards taking a little bit more time on options, not options, on aesthetics, kind of architecture. Maybe some of these other options, some of this, these other architectural designs allow for maybe a safer way to do that. That just seems unsafe to me. But, so that was one thing. And then in terms of the motion, from the, the various emails and from actually the meeting we had at Public Works, it felt like there were two things that we were trying to decide on, elevators or ramps. And so I would hate to come out of tonight and not have some decision. And so maybe if, if we are saying no to elevators, yes to switchbacks, let's take some time to figure out, is there an architectural design that is more aesthetic or pleasing or what have you? We could maybe do that. And then my ask was going to be, if we did that, what timeline, I think we should be specific on what date we're going to have those designs so that we can move forward.
I would find a motion of that sort helpful, to know elevators are off the table. And you direct me to go and look at more architectural options within the budget. Maybe our consultant isn't the right person to look at the architectural stuff. And schedule is going to happen when schedule happens. Again, we have till '27. MINDOT just would prefer it, but they can move their money to '26 if we want to build it then. So I think to the mayor's point, let's get it right. But if I know elevators are off the table, then I can have a lot of discussions. Right now, I can't even start having those discussions with architects or anyone that's done these other bridges around the world. So.
Okay. So interesting point about the elevator issue. Member Risher.
To Member Pierce's point about safety, the image you're showing doesn't appear to have any kind of fencing that would protect somebody entering through that space. Like.
Yeah, there's requirements. We need crash-rated guardrails. We need fencing. We need, this is, we, we were in a time crunch just to get graphics. We didn't go to that level of detail to make sure every, kind of when I mentioned the trees were just on there. So yes, MINDOT won't let us do anything out there that's not compliant with their safety standards, and I won't either. So thanks for that.
Member Pierce, would you care to move the, make a motion that the Roslin Park Pedestrian Bridge be designed in a manner where it does not have elevators as a component?
Yep, I would make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Jackson's second. Discussion? Reagan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is one of those projects where we, you can't make everyone happy. And it, that makes it hard, right? It makes it hard to meet all the needs. So I really feel for the interactions that you've had with all of the residents within this area. It is, it's. within this area. It is, it's impossible to meet all of the needs and desires of the community with one singular bridge. And so, like, as we're going through this, you know, myself, I'm hemming and hawing, because I'm like, what do you mean? Like, we can do an elevator, right? Like, you put in a security camera. But, at the end of the day, like, there are a lot of forces pushing us towards this. And I don't want to do proof of concept and attempt to do an elevator and have it not work out. I think that it's exciting to think about the aesthetics, and that, to me, is one of probably the most important components to this. And so, I am supportive of, you know, making this decision tonight, and then voting in favor of the motion that is in front of us, because we do just need to move forward on something. But I just wanted to acknowledge that this is one of those tougher decisions, right, of, there is no way for us to necessarily compromise and come to like, the absolute right decision, whether it's about elevators, or trees, or even which side of the sidewalk a fence is gonna go on, or a sound barrier is gonna go on. So, there's just, there are a lot of complexities to something that, if you were to ask me two years ago, before I was on the city council, I would not have said that, you know, something like this would be as involved as it is. But I think it's also because this is people's backyards, front yards, side yards. These are trees that people have planted over the years that they've lived there. These are homes that the sidewalk is going to potentially create people's vantage points directly into homes on. And so, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we've heard, we've read, we've engaged with community members, and there are a lot of voices at play. And I just want to say that I've heard everyone, and I appreciate all the engagement that we've had, and that it's, it's just complex, and it's not, it's not possible to meet all of the needs. So, again, just thank you for all of the work that you've put into it. And I am in support of making this decision to at least get to the next stage now of, what can it look like? And how can it be an amazing icon for those traveling to and through Edina?
Thank you, Member Regno. Well said. We've got a motion and a second on the table to remove any consideration of an elevator for the Roslin Park Pedestrian Bridge. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor of adoption of the motion as made, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried?
Thank you.
Helps you a little bit?
Gets closer, step by step. Thank you.
I'll keep, I'll keep sending you emails, and, and, the consultant, let's put that consultant to work, making some of these contacts instead of me.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. That's it for the main part of the agenda. And, manage your comments. I think we can jump, jump right by commission correspondent, excuse me. Manage your comments.
Thank you, your honor, members of council. I have just two quick ones. I testified this morning at, at the Senate Tax Committee on behalf of Senate File 4614. This is a bill that, if passed, would exempt the city from having to pay state sales tax on projects that are in the Braemar Master Plan and the Fred Richards Master Plan. All in all, it would create about $2.8 million worth of, of revenue for the city. So, it's, it is definitely worth our time and trouble to try to get that passed. And it's got off to a good start today. Bill Newendorf is testifying on a TIF extension bill from five to 10 years tomorrow. And, Mr. Mayor, you're going to be testifying on behalf of the Vernon Avenue Bridge or the Grandview Crossroads Project on, on Monday afternoon. Also, I just wanted to take a minute and introduce you to Jake Heckert. Jake is a new lieutenant, and this is his first night in the police chair at the dais. So, welcome, Mr. Heckert.
Welcome. Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Member Risher?
There will be, on April 24th, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, NAC, Noise Oversight Committee Listening Session for the Metropolitan Airports Commission. So, for people who are concerned about noise, please, or other issues, no, April 24th, mark your calendar, 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thanks. Is this is the one we've been talking about, where it would be located? We decided on City Hall?
It's gonna be in the community center, or the community room.
Well, not in here, not in chambers.
No, not in chambers, but that should work.
Okay. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we just got back from the National League of Cities Conference, another very interesting meeting, getting to see people from all over the country and spend some time with, with staff and with Member Agnew. It was really fun. Just a couple of interesting points. First, our, one of our comparison cities is Bellevue/Washington, and a member of the Bellevue/Washington City Council presented at the First Tier Suburbs Council that they are working on a curb management study to address, to reduce their vehicle miles traveled. And so, that's something that I'm gonna be watching to see when that report comes out. It's really interesting. They're competing between landscaping, between parking, between deliveries, between sidewalk cafes, and it's actually contributing to their vehicle miles traveled. So, they're gonna say, how can we manage that to reduce that? A theme was that our electric grid is getting stressed, and we don't have a utility here. But it was very interesting that as we electrify things and have more electric vehicles, we also have to build out our capacity and, you know, think about, you know, what can we do in terms of solar here? And the general session, the first day, the chair asked a really good question, that is, what will our city look like in 100 years? And I thought that was a really wonderful way of looking at, how are we gonna grow? How are we gonna have, I see Ms. Wilson, we're gonna have clean water in our surface water? And what else is it gonna look like? Going for a beautiful bridge. And that, a strong city requires innovation and find and capitalize on the cutting edge. And I think this discussion this evening really goes towards that. I attended a program on building a community-centric approach to emergency response services. There is apparently a lifeline out there, 988, where people can call. I think it's a suicide prevention line. And they had an in-depth discussion about how that has actually helped their public safety overall, and a really good way to incorporate community-centric policing. Lots and lots of resources through the Office of OJP, which I think the Office of Justice Programs, and cops. I'll write something up and send it to our chief of police. And then, finally, we went to a leveraging technology and innovation presentation. And the first part was about tech hubs. And we're actually in a tech hub at Minneapolis, and Bloomington, and Plymouth. But overall, the whole Twin Cities area has been designated a tech hub by the federal government for medical technology. And I think what, as we look at plans and ideas of the future, it's good to keep in the back of our mind that there's federal guidance with that. So, that's what I have. Thank you so much. And thanks to the taxpayers for sending me. It was really a great opportunity to expand our, our knowledge of city government.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Pierce?
Nothing from me tonight.
Member Regno?
Thank you. I wanted to also recap a little bit of our, our trip to Washington, DC specifically. It was, I think, a really, really good trip, just to build off of what Member Jackson referred to. There were some larger group sessions that we did. And some of the, the key discussion points that really resonated with me were how, especially local municipalities are thinking about elevating this nonpartisan decision-making, and how it's, it's really unique at the city level to focus on the people aspect of it. And we're in, I think, sometimes more unique positions to have that partisanship removed, which was, it was good discussion. The other things, I'm not gonna repeat everything that Member Jackson said, but the other things that really resonated with me were the connections to technology. So, some of the things that I were thinking, I was thinking about are, you know, what are the ways that cities are adopting technology, and how are we beginning to evolve? There was some discussion on AI as a whole, and I know that the mayor kind of referenced some discussion around AI, too. And I think that there's always going to be a, kind of a curve of, what are like, the, the fun, kind of flashy new technologies out there that everyone's kind of gravitating towards? And what are the ways that we can, as a city, introduce technologies to make interacting with us as a city easier, and make the lives of our residents easier? And so, I think that there are already some things that we're doing as a city, but, you know, I had a conversation with Manager Neal afterwards as well, of just like, how can we start to just do an assessment of where we're at today, and where are there opportunities to infuse even more technology into what we do on a day-to-day basis? And then, I, I think, I also want to just offer this out to who's ever watching. I'd love to understand, you know, from residents, what are some of the other ways that they want us to be more tech-forward? What are ways that they want to be interacting with us, or connecting with us? And we do, we obviously have some folks that present some of that information during community comment, but I'd love to hear from even more people of, what ways did they want Edina, as a city, to be leveraging technology across the board? The other focus, then, that really resonated with me and stood out was that focus on mental health, overall. Member Jackson mentioned, but the, the 988 helpline, that was something that I had heard about. But to hear the impact that it's having, I think, was really imperative. And then, just to also double down, I'm going back to technology, because this is the order in which I wrote my notes. But, the tech hub is so, so exciting. And so, I'm gonna be meeting with a couple of people just to understand, like, what does that mean? I know that Manager Bill Newendorf has already had a conversation as a part of Edina on what can Edina's role be in that tech hub of the Twin Cities. But I am also interested in leaning into some of those conversations, and seeing how we can partner, especially in, in terms of some of our overall evolution of specific areas within the cities, like, how, how is there gonna be that opportunity? So, more to come on that. But I, I just left the conference feeling really excited and invigorated, clearly, about all that I think we can kind of take from that and infuse into our, our city from a technology perspective. So, that's it.
Great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. In this work we're doing at the legislature, there's a piece of legislation called Missing Middle Housing, House File 4019. Cities have had a significant concern about the potential loss of local control in, on a variety of different areas, or in a variety of different areas. So, 15 mayors are meeting tomorrow with the governor on that topic and some others. I'll be part of that conversation, all the MLC cities. And then, I was pleased that the two of you could go to the National League of Cities. I get invited, kind of last minute, to the, I had a couple weeks' advance notice, but Aspen Institute put on a climate conference in Miami Beach, and invited 50 mayors down. And, and they paid the, the airfare and the hotel, and had us come down, because they were typically short of mayors for these conversations that they were having. And so, I found it quite interesting. There were so many interesting topics that we covered. The first day was primarily mayor's meeting on, on Monday, and then Tuesday and Wednesday, we, we covered things like climate-friendly housing. And there was, you know, electrification in terms of the transmission capabilities that we needed from a country standpoint, keeping it cool, and solutions for extreme heat. You know, we may have to deal with some of that, even in our climate. When cities set their own climate goals, that was an interesting session. A session around innovation that Member Regno just talked about. Marketing climate change, electric school buses, and, and offshore windmill production, or wind, wind production through the use of windmills based offshore. Building political will was another topic. Emissions and solutions, hiding in plain sight, that was a, a great session. And the geopolitics, geopolitics and energy, energy transition was also another topic that was quite interesting. So, over those three days, there were a lot of interesting things to cover. I can be pleased to talk to any of you about some of the things that took place there. I thought the fellow that had done research for a couple of years, maybe done 8,000-plus interviews nationwide, or worldwide, actually, on marketing climate change, the difficulty of, of talking about pollution, if you will. And those are some of the conclusions that he came to, is how, how do you talk about these things in, in sort of plain speak? And, and they had discovered this through all of these thousands and thousands of interviews that we, that he, that his organization did, left Madison Avenue to do this work around climate change. And so, it was, you know, conclusions like the stories that you hear from people, they need to be humanized. And you can talk about pollution, but not greenhouse gas reduction. He said, nobody wakes up in the morning talking about what a great day it's gonna be to decarbonize. You know, you've got to find those human interactions. And it, so he had some interesting things to, to talk about there, on the strategies that one might employ, either as a city or just a person talking about climate change. And so, that was, was well worth the time that, that it took. And saw some of the mayors I see at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and had, had good conversations with them. So, that's it for me. Anybody else have anything that they've thought of, they want to cover? Okay. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
A second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Regno seconds the motion that we adjourn the city council meeting this 19th day of March already, 2024. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. We stand adjourned.